Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call to order the Howell Township Planning Board meeting for Thursday, January 17, 2019. Eileen, would you please read the opening statement?
Yes. I hereby declare this meeting of the Howell Township Planning Board to be open. Adequate notice having been given pursuant to the New Jersey Open Public Meeting Act in the following manner. First, on January 4, 2019, a copy of said notice was mailed to the Star Ledger and the Trittown News. Second, on January 4, 2019, a copy of said notice was hand-delivered to the clerk of the township of Howell. Third, on January 4, 2019, said notice was posted in the office of the Planning Board and on the bulletin board in the Howell Township Municipal Building, 4567 Route 9, Howell Township, New Jersey. In accordance with the Fire Prevention Code and your safety, please be advised that this facility is designed with two emergency exits which are on your right at the front and rear of the meeting room. Furthermore, smoking is not permitted in the municipal building. Please take note that this meeting is being videotaped for possible future broadcast on Howell Township TV 77.
Call the roll, please.
Mr. Boyle? I have not heard. Did anybody hear from Mr. Boyle? No. Mr. Dorado?
Present.
Mr. Husser?
Here.
Chief Kudrick?
Here.
Mr. Nacastro has been excused. Mr. Schneider?
Here.
Mr. Tannenhouse?
Here.
Mr. Seaman?
Here.
Mr. Everett?
Here.
Councilwoman O'Donnell has been excused. Chairman Nash?
Present.
You have a quorum.
Thank you. I'd like to ask everyone to please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, followed by a moment of silence for our first responders and our troops, both overseas and at home. Chief, please.
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do you have any correspondence?
The only correspondence I have is an email from Mr. Alfieri regarding Elon, which is on tonight's agenda for an extension of time. But since he's here, maybe he just wants to address the board.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the Board. Salvatore Alfieri on behalf of Elon. We had a extension request and we withdrew it for now. There's a -- their COA attorney for this developer has submitted a letter to the COA attorney for the town and is going to the court in an effort to modify the ordinance because of the connection between the development of the COA units and the small strip center that's part of the project. So they're looking for relief, and we felt that really no need to ask for an extension from you until they at least get through that issue. So if we renew it, we'll send a letter asking if you're ready to reconsider.
So you're withdrawing without prejudice?
Without prejudice, yes.
Thank you.
Thanks.
So, Mr. Cucchiere, if his time lapses, does his approval lapse?
No. What lapses is the vested rights in the zone. The approval is good, basically, forever. However, if there's a zone change and you don't have the extension, then you would be subject to new zoning. So in that instance, his approval, or the approval, you know, would no longer be valid. Or, you know, sometimes the state adopts new stormwater management regulations, they would be applicable. There would be no protection. But the approval does not lapse.
So this action has of no concern to the board in their withdrawal?
Well, we certainly, you know, there's nothing for us to do about it. They have the right to withdraw it, and they understand the potential risk associated with that decision, and they voluntarily undertake it.
Okay. Thank you. So anyone who's in the audience tonight for case number SD 2959, Elon Associates LLC, the applicant has withdrawn their application, so we will not be hearing this extension of time request. Just before we get into the meeting, we all have the planner that was issued by the New Jersey Planning Association. And on the first page, I'd just like to call to your attention, there's this annual class that we go to on a Saturday. It looks like they've calendared April 13 at the Monmouth Fire Academy, which is just on 33. I would like to have everyone on the board see if they can attend that class.
And if you can, please let me know as soon as possible, because I have to register you. The only thing I did notice, there is an asterisk there, so it says "to be determined." So I'm not sure if that means they're not holding it until they see how many people they get for that class, but I can certainly call them and let you know at the next meeting.
Or if you could do it as an email.
I can do that as well.
Yeah. So if, once we get that email from Eileen, if we can respond back so that she can appraise the organization accordingly.
And any new members who have not gone have to go within 18 months of being appointed, so it's really important. You should try to attend if at all possible.
Yeah. Okay. Moving on.
Moving on.
We have some resolutions. Do we have, did we get 999 Route 33?
Yes.
Yeah, we did?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Yes, we did. All right. Resolutions for memorialization. First one, case number SP 1042 999 Route 33 LLC. It's a resolution granting preliminary and final major site plan with ancillary bulk variances, eligible voters, Mr. Husser, Chief Kudrick, Mr. Tannenhouse, Mr. Seaman, and myself. Gentlemen, do I have a motion?
Make a motion to memorialize case number SP 1042 for 999 Route 33 LLC.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
A second.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Mr. Husser?
Yes.
Chief Kudrick?
Yes.
Mr. Tannenhouse?
Yes.
Mr. Seaman?
Yes.
Chairman Nash?
Yes.
Motion is, resolutions memorialized.
All right. The next resolution that we have to memorialize is for the Planning Board Attorney. It's a resolution appointing Ron Cucchiere, Esquire of Wiener Law Group, LLP, for 2019. Eligible voters, Mr. Dorado, Mr. Hooser, Chief Kudrick, Mr. Schneider, Mr. Tannenhouse, Mr. Seaman, and myself. Gentlemen, do I have a motion?
Make a motion to memorialize the resolution appointing Ron Cucchiere for 2019.
Thank you. Mr. Schneider, do I have a second?
A second.
Thank you, Mr. Tannenhouse. Call the roll, please.
Mr. Dorado?
Yes.
Mr. Husser?
Yes.
Chief Kudrick?
Yes.
Mr. Schneider?
Paul.
Mr. Schneider?
Yes.
Mr. Tannenhouse?
Yes.
Mr. Seaman?
Yes.
Chairman Nash?
Yes.
Resolutions memorialized.
Thank you. Next one is resolution for the appointment of the Planning Board Engineer, appointing Laura Newman PE/PP of CME Associates for 2019. Eligible voters, Mr. Dorado, Mr. Hooser, Chief Kudrick, Mr. Schneider, Mr. Tannenhouse, Mr. Seaman, and myself. Gentlemen, do I have a motion?
Make a motion to memorialize resolution appointing Laura Newman PE/CME for 2019.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
A second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Dorado?
Yes.
Mr. Husser?
Yes.
Chief Kudrick?
Yes.
Mr. Schneider?
Yes.
Mr. Tannenhouse?
Yes.
Mr. Seaman?
Yes.
Chairman Nash?
Yes.
Resolutions memorialized.
Thank you. Next one is resolution for Planning Board Planner. It's a resolution appointing Peter Van Cooy, PP, AICP of CME Associates for 2019. Eligible voters, Mr. Dorado, Mr. Hooser, Chief Kudrick, Mr. Schneider, Mr. Tannenhouse, Mr. Seaman, and myself. Gentlemen, a motion, please.
Oh, I'll make a motion to memorialize the resolution appointing Peter Van Cooy.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Dorado?
Yes.
Mr. Husser?
Yes.
Chief Kudrick?
Yes.
Mr. Schneider?
Yes.
Mr. Tannenhouse?
Yes.
Mr. Seaman?
Yes.
And Chairman Nash?
Yes.
Resolutions memorialized.
Thank you. Next is for Planning Board Certified Tree Expert. It's a resolution appointing Shari Spiro, CTE of CME Associates for 2019. Eligible voters, Mr. Dorado, Mr. Hooser, Chief Kudrick, Mr. Schneider, Mr. Tannenhouse, Mr. Seaman, and myself. Motion, please, gentlemen?
I make a motion to memorialize the resolution appointing Shari Spiro to be the Planning Board Certified Tree Expert.
Do I have a second?
A second.
Thank you.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Dorado?
Yes.
Mr. Husser?
Yes.
Chief Kudrick?
Yes.
Mr. Schneider?
Yes.
Mr. Tannenhouse?
Yes.
Mr. Seaman?
Yes.
Chairman Nash?
Yes.
Resolutions memorialized.
Thank you. Next resolution is for case number SP 1051 Cornerstone Cavalry Chapel. It's a resolution granting submission waivers. Eligible voters, excuse me, Mr. Schneider, Mr. Tannenhouse, Mr. Seaman, and myself.
I'll make a motion to memorialize the resolution granting submission waivers for case number SP-1051.
Second.
The second was by Mr. Schneider. Roll call, please.
Mr. Schneider?
Yes.
Mr. Tannenhouse?
Yes.
Mr. Seaman?
Yes.
Chairman Nash?
Yes.
Resolutions memorialized.
Next one is case number SP 1052 Monmouth Commerce Center LLC. It's a resolution granting submission waivers. Eligible voters, Mr. Dorado, Mr. Hooser, Chief Kudrick, Mr. Schneider, Mr. Tannenhouse, Mr. Seaman, and myself. Gentlemen, do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to memorialize the resolution granting submission waivers to case number SP-1052.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Seaman is the second. Roll call, please.
Mr. Dorado?
Yes.
Mr. Husser?
Yes.
Chief Kudrick?
Yes.
Mr. Schneider?
Yes.
Mr. Tannenhouse?
Yes.
Mr. Seaman?
Yes.
Chairman Nash?
Yes.
Resolutions memorialized.
Thank you. And the last one, finally, is a resolution for case number SD 2847 A2 Selma LLC (Heastack Glen). It's a resolution granting a third one-year extension of time. Eligible voters, Mr. Dorado, Mr. Hooser, Chief Kudrick, Mr. Schneider, Mr. Tannenhouse, Mr. Seaman, and myself.
I'll make a motion granting, make a motion for the resolution granting a third one-year extension of time to case number SD-2847A2.
247. Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. You're right. Do I have a second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Dorado?
Yes.
Mr. Husser?
Yes.
Chief Kudrick?
Yes.
Mr. Schneider?
Yes.
Mr. Tannenhouse?
Yes.
Mr. Seaman?
Yes.
Chairman Nash?
Yes.
Resolutions memorialized.
Okay. So the next application is case number SP 1006 Gil Petroleum. Mr. Alfieri, a sec?
Yes.
What are you going to be doing tonight on this application?
We have the LSRP present who will describe the current status of the cleanup of the property. We have an architect and the engineer present. We do not have our traffic expert or our planner for tonight, so we only have those three witnesses.
I have a minor subdivision application that's in front of you. How long do you anticipate? It's actually behind you. How long do you anticipate your case is going to take?
It's going to take a while.
Yours is going to take a while.
Mr. Chairman, I need 15 minutes to testify against Gil Petroleum. I live across the street from it. I have all kinds of information for you. I request the, I request the right to testify.
You will have your opportunity, yes. There's no problem. I'm trying to weigh if we have a minor subdivision, which should be a very quick application that is behind this. I'm just trying to determine right now if we're going to move that in front.
Okay, I need, I need 15 minutes.
Yeah, you can have all the time that you want.
That's fine. Thank you very much.
All right. Does the board have any objection if we move the Rosemary Byrd application in front of Gil Petroleum so we can get that cleaned up and out of here?
That's a good idea.
Okay.
Thanks.
All right. Do I have the applicant for case number SD 2985, Rosemary Byrd?
Todd Cohen's not here.
He's not here, the attorney.
He's not here?
No.
Okay.
So I guess we keep going.
Well, just, are you anticipating Mr. Cohen showing up, or does he have a replacement tonight?
He's definitely coming. I spoke to him today.
All right. Well, then, we're not, we're not going to start till your attorney gets here.
Okay, he lost his opportunity.
Okay. No, you, we're not going to deprive you of your attorney, who's on his way.
Okay, Mr. Alfieri. So we're going to hear now case number SP 1006 Gil Petroleum. It's a conditional use, preliminary and final major site plan. It's an application of Gil Petroleum, Inc., as applicant and owner seeking conditional use and preliminary and final major site plan approval to remove all existing site improvements, including the existing access drives, and construct a 3,000-square-foot convenience store with gasoline, fuel dispensing, service consisting of six pump islands, and an attendant kiosk beneath a 42, I'm sorry, 62-by-62-foot canopy. There are three new 15,000-gallon underground fuel storage tanks for regular, premium, and diesel fuel are also proposed along, within the right-in-only drive and a right-out-only drive along Route 9, as well as an apparent right-in-left-out-only driveway extending along Wykoff Mills Road, parking for 17 vehicles, a loading area, a refuse enclosure, infiltration basin, landscaping, lighting, and signage on premises known as Block 140, lots 1, 2, 3, and 4.01, 695, U.S. Highway 9 North, and Wykoff Mills Road. This applicant was previously heard on, and I don't have the dates.
Well, I don't, I think, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Alfieri is going to address that. I think he's going to start anew tonight.
Okay.
Yeah, we were here in January of 2016, so a lot has happened since then. We're, we're going to start as if there's been no prior hearings. Only the testimony you're hearing from tonight forward should be considered by the board.
Okay.
And I, through counsel, we have an objectors' counsel here, Mr. Gazarovski. We advised him that our LSRP may or may not be able to come back to future meetings because we're, he's not retained by us, he's been retained by BP. So Mr. Gazarovski is going to want the opportunity to cross-examine him tonight. The balance of the witnesses we're going to bring back to subsequent hearings.
All right, but as you well know, Mr. Alfieri, as each witness testifies, once you are done with the, with the testimony and all your questions, and if, once the board is done by the questions, we will open it up first to Mr. Gazarovski, all right, and then to the public to cross-examine that witness.
Understood, but we, we'll bring everyone back, except we can't guarantee the one. But you, we'll, we should finish him tonight. Thank you.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
I think we should just invite Mr. Gazarovski up to place his appearance on the record and tell the board who his clients are.
Can we hold off a minute? Mr. Schulte, or he's back?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is Ron Gazarovski. I'm an attorney with offices in Red Bank, New Jersey. I represent an entity known as SAP, American Choice. It is a LLC, a big business in New Jersey. I earlier spoke to Mr. Cucchiere, as well as Mr. Alfieri.
Did you speak to him, my counselor?
Yes, I understand that we're going to listen to the testimony of the environmentalist. I may or may not question him. My primary questioning will have to do with those witnesses, which Mr. Alfieri is not calling this evening, so I will, of course, return at a later date when they are present and testify. Thank you.
Mr. Gazarovski, just for the record, what, what property does your client own?
Funny?
What property does your client own? Like, where's your client located?
That's 639 Route 9 North. I think it's a little bit further north than the subject property.
Also, do you have any objections to the board's jurisdiction tonight?
With the what?
Do you have any objections to the?
I haven't completely reviewed the file, so I'm not prepared to answer that question.
Okay. Mr. Alfieri, do you have any objections to the standing of Mr. Gazarovski's client?
No, it's my understanding that his client is the owner of the Exxon gas station, which is two properties away from ours.
Okay. I agree, Mr. Chairman, that the objector has, has standing. Mr. Gazarovski, if you do determine at some point that you have an objection to jurisdiction, I just ask that you alert the board as soon as possible.
I shall, I shall do that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay.
Our first witness is Mr. Simon.
Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give this board is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Please state and spell your name for the record.
Richard Simon, spelled S-I-M-U-N.
You could, if you're more comfortable saying whatever's easier for you.
Either way, it's fine.
And Mr. Simon, first identify by whom you are employed and what your license status is. What license do you hold, and what's the current status?
I'm currently a licensed site remediation professional through the New Jersey Department of Environmental Protection. I've been retained by BP to address a storage tank removal case.
And have you been involved with this? How long have you been involved with this specific property?
Approximately one year.
And your company, by whom are you employed?
It's Parsons, P-A-R-S-O-N-S.
And how long has Parsons been involved?
Approximately one year.
And you were retained by BP, you said, for oil tank, gas tank removal. Did your company remove the tank, or were you retained afterwards?
We were retained afterwards. We were not the consultant that removed the USTs.
Mr. Alf, there, how many boards has this, Mr. Simon testified in front of?
This is my first planning board. I've been to one environmental commission meeting on this matter.
This is the first planning board in Howell, or is this the first planning board in New Jersey?
Basically, the first one in New Jersey.
Right, and he's a licensed LSRP, so it's our position that he's, we're seeking to have him qualified simply as a licensed LSRP, which I'll have him describe what that is momentarily. And then if you have other questions about his qualifications, certainly be glad to answer.
And what's your educational background?
Undergraduate geology, graduate degree environmental engineering.
From where?
Undergrad is King University, graduate is Stevens Institute of Technology.
And can you just tell the board what an LSRP is and what one has to do in order to get that designation?
It requires a certain number of years of experience working in the environmental field within New Jersey. There's educational requirements, as well as being able to pass a test gauging how well you know the regulations of the New Jersey Department of Environmental Protection.
I'm going to ask my environmental liaison, so is there, are you comfortable with this gentleman's qualification?
Yes, I am.
All right, Mr. Alfieri, we'll accept him as a LSRP.
Okay, thank you. And as I asked you before, your, your company got involved after the tank was removed?
That's correct.
And, and what was, what was your role from the point you were hired as it relates to this property and the tank, and the, the condition of the property after the tank was removed?
Right, my responsibility was to review previous environmental information prepared by the prior consultant, basically review the case, determine that it met the requirements of the New Jersey Department of Environmental Protection for completing a remedial action.
And describe for the board what a remedial action is.
The remediation began with the removal of the tanks, which occurred in 2008. From there, there was subsequent soil investigation and groundwater investigation.
And are there monitoring wells currently located on the property?
Yes, there are.
Can you describe for the board the current status of the, of your involvement in the, submissions to the NJDP?
Current status, as of the end of November 2008, a remedial action report was submitted to the New Jersey Department of Environmental Protection. That remedial action report documents that all soil on the site, that the site complies with applicable soil remediation standards. Groundwater concentrations are stable or decreasing, which the site is candidate for monitor natural attenuation. And we are in the process of filing for a remedial action permit with the state of New Jersey to obligate long-term monitoring until groundwater concentrations attain compliance with the groundwater quality standards.
Is there any contamination that exiting the site in any way at this, at this time?
There is not. Everything has been delineated within the property boundaries.
And, and how long do you believe that type of condition has existed where nothing has left the site in terms of environmental, negative environmental conditions?
Since I've been involved with the site, so since at least this year.
And is there anything on the site currently that would prevent a, this applicant from developing the property as currently proposed?
No.
Is there anything that the applicant or the contractors that do the construction would need to do to, to make sure that they comply with NJDP regulations, or to avoid the contamination from leaving the site?
Nothing would exacerbate the contamination from leaving the site. They would have to review the report, look for vapor mitigation concerns, and to make sure everything is in compliance.
And the, the document, the final document that would close out your involvement, well, frankly, let me ask it differently. You indicated the report has been filed, but that you were going to apply for a separate document. Can you identify the name of that document again and what it actually means when you get it?
That's a remedial action permit. So that's a permit with the state of New Jersey that obligates BP to perform the long-term monitoring and see that the site eventually attains compliance through natural attenuation.
And that, that permit would require that an LSRP remain involved for the purpose of the monitoring?
Yes, they would remain in place for the, the duration of the monitoring.
And is that an obligation that BP has under its contract when they sold the property to this developer?
They are the responsible party, and they are obligated to perform that monitoring.
And if there's an issue with any environmental problem going forward, BP would remain the responsible party?
That's correct.
You appeared before the environmental commission at least once, as far as I know.
Yes.
And the environmental commission issued a report which has been marked as B 31 dated July 26. Is that the report you have in front of you?
That's correct.
And there are several bullet points in that report. Would you, would you mind going through those for the board?
Okay, the, the first bullet is, says the responsible party is conducting the remediation in accordance with applicable regulations. So basically, these bullet items, I'm reading the understanding of the environmental commission. So that is true. We are in, under New Jersey Department of Environmental Protection. The site is in the LSRP program. The second bullet, ongoing remediation, monitor natural attenuation, does not permit The second bullet, ongoing remediation, monitor natural attenuation, does not permit the development of the property.
Does not prevent?
Does not, yeah, prohibit, it says, or prevent, sorry.
A little different step. We would be going home right now.
There is a resident who presented information and concerns that groundwater impacts have migrated towards the Manasquan River, but based upon information provided by the LSRP for the site, contamination does not appear to have migrated off the property. And based upon the confirmation from the LSRP on behalf of the responsible party, contamination observed during the development of the property, i.e. soil contamination in proximity to former USTs, will be appropriately addressed and that the required data collection from the monitoring wall is being performed. The environmental commission had requested that we notify them the next time we go out and sample. So currently, that next time has not happened yet. That will happen after the remedial action permit is filed for and we undergo biennial sampling going forward.
And the applicant would stipulate that it will comply with all of those conditions of if an approval were granted so that they survive tonight or some subsequent meeting? The permit application that you're going to be filing, we will provide a copy to the environmental commission in the town?
Correct, it's public information. We can certainly provide.
That's all we have, Mr. Chair, unless, obviously, if you have further questions.
Mr. Chair?
I just have a few and just some clarifications for members of the Board. Mr. Simon, I think, I don't know that all the Board members are up to speed on LSRP versus what used to be the process where you would get a new further action letter.
Okay.
And maybe if you could just explain to them, you know, what used to happen versus what happens now and what, essentially, the LSRP, I assume at the end of the process, there's going to be a no, there's going to be a review action outcome?
Response action outcome letter, which has replaced the no further action letter.
Right, right. So if you could just explain, you know, what used to happen versus what happens now?
So under the old regime, all the documentation would be provided to a New Jersey Department of Environmental Protection case manager, who would review the case, document compliance against applicable regulations. And once all those regulations were satisfied, they would issue a letter, it's called, it used to be called the no further action letter. Basically says the remediation is complete, there's no additional requirements at that point. What has changed, back in 2008, the LSRP program was adopted through the Site Remediation Reform Act, where licensees such as myself are able to basically act as DEP for reviewing the reports, documenting compliance, and submitting those reports to DEP. So there is professional liability on myself for that, to make sure that I abide by those regulations. There's a code of ethics that I need to abide by and uphold, which is protection of human health and the environment. So what has changed regarding the letters, instead of the no further action letter, once the remedial action permit is filed with NJDEP, they approve the permit, that will enable me to write a letter called a limited response action outcome, which basically satisfies that groundwater is undergoing remediation and it will attain compliance.
So is there, would there be construction on this site prior to the RAO or do you have to wait for the RAO in order to begin any construction?
No, there's no groundwater usage on the property. There's nothing that would disturb groundwater, that would prevent construction from going forward.
So just to be clear, I had heard before you have a remedial action report, the soil on the site meets applicable standards, there's no remediation with soil?
All remediation was completed previously. There was soil removed when the USTs were removed, but that's going back towards 2008.
Do you have an RAO for that work?
RAO has not been issued for that. So that report, there was a UST report that was submitted in 2008, which does have the NJDEP approval on. So the remedial action report that was recently submitted, it summarizes all the past soil work, and that will go in for a remedial, or response action outcome.
Okay.
So I anticipate those letters, I need to speak with my client on that, but that could happen this year.
And I also just want to be clear about that, when you say your client, certainly they have retained you, but your real responsibility and duties are pursuant to the, what you said before.
The code of ethics, correct.
Right, code of ethics, and you are acting in place of the DEP, so it's not as if your client can really direct you or determine how you're going to do your job and what the remediation's going to be. You are required-
That's correct.
Okay. I just wanted the Board to understand that, you know, the DEP has a limited role here, and it's Mr. Simon who's essentially acting in place of the DEP and what used to happen and what happens now.
Thank you, Mr. Cuccinero.
Suze? I just have a few questions, Mr. Simon. When you showed up at the environmental commission, it was July, I believe, the RIR was already submitted.
Correct.
You subsequently submitted an RAR.
Yes.
Was any soil work done on the site or it was simply a summary of historic soil work?
That was a summary of historic soil work.
Okay. Do you anticipate a timeframe of when the remedial action permit will be filed?
That should be within the next month or two. I'm waiting for BP to cut a check. The permit is ready to go, so it's just administrative right now on their side. So it could be within a week or it could be within a month.
Sure. The duration of the CEA?
I believe I need to double check, but I believe it's approximately six years.
Six years?
I believe so, yes.
Are any of the concentrations of the groundwater contaminants above the groundwater screening levels?
There is one recent hit, approximately in 2017, it was kind of a, sort of an outlier where it spiked up. The two subsequent rounds are below the screening levels. The site could qualify for a vertical petroleum distance exclusion, but otherwise, there's no receptors on the site right now that would be affected by it.
Has any soil gas sampling been conducted on the site, to your knowledge?
We have not, since it's been a vacant property.
The prior LSRP, has he conducted any?
I would have to double check that. I don't know off the top of my-
Now, looking through the files, is the tank, and I'm not sure if you can answer this question, but where the tanks are going in, are they going in the same area of the former tanks?
That I would have to ask the engineer, where things were.
Because it leads into my second question, that you're, in essence, going to issue a limited restricted RAO.
Correct.
Because there's groundwater impacts on the site. If, so to say, during redevelopment, soils are encountered that are impacted, is BP going to remediate?
They're obliged to, yes.
Okay. Now, we understand that you are retained by BP, not by Gil Petroleum.
That's correct.
Okay, and I want to stress that point. Is there, does BP stay on or are they transfer obligations with remedial action permit going into the future?
They're staying on.
And they'll always stay on as the-
They will always be a per, or a permitty, yes.
And they will take care of the ongoing obligations for monitoring and by certs?
That's correct.
Okay. No deed notice is proposed because there's no soil?
No deed notice.
Deewatering during construction, what's the depth of groundwater out there?
Approximately six feet, you'll start getting into saturated soil.
So you're going to have some deewatering during construction of contaminated water?
It would have to be properly handled.
Okay.
Could we just ask, how is that going to properly be handled?
There would need to be testing, containerization, and proper disposal.
Yes, I understand, Mr. Cuccinero.
Or, I mean, you could, you could file some permits and treatment system, I mean, you can go that route as well.
Right, it all depends on what the quantity, I don't, I'm not sure how much deewatering would be involved.
Is it a decreasing trend or is it a stable trend?
Largely decreasing. There might be one well where things are stable, but for the most part, everything is decreasing.
And it's your common BTAC benzene, toluene, ethylbenzene, xylanes?
That's correct.
What's the highest concentration to, approximately, I'm not going to-
It was the, the xylanes are what triggered the screening level exceedance. I don't have the report in front of me, so I don't know offhand. I mean, we're talking maybe in the tens. It's not extremely high.
Okay.
I mean, as I said, they're below screening level. I believe the benzene screening level is 20, so it would be below that, since I know we don't have an exceedance for that.
And my recollection, and I know you said it before, nothing, I know you went back in and put temporary well points, or maybe that was the prior LSRP, I should say.
It was the prior.
He was at the end, so I don't want to say that. I know that you stated that doesn't go offsite, side-grantiant wells are clean.
Correct.
It's contained to the site.
Mm-hmm.
I have no further questions.
So I was around in the 2016 application, and there was some public input that there was migration of the plume. Have you examined that and can you testify to the fact that it is or is not occurring?
It was examined. The documentation would be in the remedial action report. There were some prior requests from the environmental commission to do some additional investigation, which were completed. Results of that indicated that the impact does not extend offsite. So that information will be, it is described in the remedial action report.
So I guess just in layman's terms, has the plume?
It does not go off the site.
Has it migrated at all?
No. Not since I've been involved, I'll say.
You haven't been involved that long.
Right, and the information that I've seen, I'm confident that it does not extend offsite.
Peter, would you like to offer?
Just building off of the Chairman's question, the outlier that occurred in 2017, do you know which well and the location on site that that originated from?
I don't have that information with me.
Well, number two.
Continuing the questioning. You talk about the remedial action permit that you're going to be filing. What is the remedial action plan?
Remedial action plan is long-term monitoring. The remedial action report has demonstrated that the remains of the plume will naturally attenuate through biological processes, and groundwater will be restricted during that time for any use, and it will be monitored within the timeframe of the classification exception area, which becomes part of the remedial action permit. So those institutional controls will remain in place until groundwater meets the groundwater quality standards.
So explain to me, because I'm a little concerned, when you go to excavate, you're clearly going to, if your depth of the contaminated soil is approximately six to eight feet below grade, you are going to be going into that soil for probably the foundations of the canopy or at least then for-
And the USTs.
Yes, thank you, and for the USTs. So you're clearly going to be disturbing contaminated soil.
Well, groundwater, groundwater.
Yeah, soil is not- Exceeding applicable standards.
Okay, groundwater?
Yes.
All right. So how do you control, when you start your excavation, where that groundwater is going to be moved to, or are you pumping that out to the extent that you know that you'll be dealing with only a dry condition?
If there's any need for pumping, typically, it would be containerized in a large frac tank, possibly 20,000 gallon tanks. There could be onsite treatment if needed. I don't have details on how much deewatering will be needed, though, but I can just speak that those are common ways of managing impacted groundwater during construction.
Agreed, but when is this all going to be finalized?
What do you mean by finalized? When groundwater's going to-
What course of action is going to be? I mean, clearly, if the contractor's going to begin excavation, you have to have the equipment necessary to address that.
That's correct.
Out there right away. So at what point is it determined this is what we're going to do?
I believe that would be part of the developer, it needs to be as part of the developer's plan.
How do we make sure, how do we make sure if this occurs?
Yeah, typically, so in this situation, it would be kind of part of a construction management plan that, you know, he's right, there's two ways to get rid of the water. You put it in 20,000 gallon frac tanks and they sit there until they can get pumped out, or you submit a permit to the State of New Jersey, which could take a couple months to approve, and it will run through some type of treatment, carbon, a settling tank, and it could, you know, once treated, get pumped into the sewer system if approved by the DEP. But again, that would be on the developer, and then I'm sure he would probably look to Mr. Simon to handle the permitting process, because he's familiar with it.
Right, but this is not a municipal project, so this is a private developer.
Correct.
So how do we make sure that those provisions are in place and functioning so that when the contractor begins excavation, whatever method they're-
I think the LSRP has to be involved, no matter what.
Mr. Simon, are you, are you going to be on scene during the excavation?
I'm not retained by Gil Petroleum, so we would have to discuss it. Gil Petroleum would need to retain their own LSRP or their own environmental professional.
But if you're acting on behalf of BP and BP's overseeing the project?
BP is not overseeing the development of the project, just the remediation.
But wouldn't that going into the soil be part of that remediation? Or no?
It basically serves as the, oh, the remedial action permit with a classification exception area on the site serves as a warning that there is impacted groundwater and that it needs to be handled properly.
We could certainly stipulate that there'll be an LSRP on site during all construction activity, you know, below grade construction activity, if that's something that-
Well, I think it's going to come down to, I don't want to say it's a requirement, but when you're talking about deewatering contaminated water on a site, I mean, there's going to be DEP involvement with the permitting process and-
Well, that's what I'm, that's what I'm saying.
So should that be part of our packet?
Basically, you're acting on behalf of DEP from what I'm-
So LSRP's are kind of the sheriffs, sheriffs of the DEP, so to say.
Are they subcontractors of the DEP?
We kind of took the case manager away from the DEP, so-
So wouldn't it make sense to have him there?
But the client would have to retain him.
Right, right.
So he's not, he's retained by BP, Gil Petroleum is a different entity.
So Gil Petroleum could hire their own LSRP?
Correct.
I know what you're saying. I see. And that plan could be- So as long as these control mechanisms are in place when you start breaking soil.
So as long as a condition of the resolution, if there is a favorable action, would be that during any subgrade excavation, an LSRP would have to be on site.
Or, Mr. Chairman, is it better to have Gil Petroleum develop what that plan should be and BP's LSRP should review it, make sure it's in compliance?
We can't require BP, you know, to do anything in particular. The thing here is it is an LSRP. Whether it's BP's or somebody else's, it's just that it's an LSRP.
Got it. So it makes no, it's no benefit to see what that plan is, to have it part of our packet for approval?
Well, from what I'm listening from Mr. Simon is that, that there's one or two options and they don't really know which way it's going to go, because when whoever does the construction for Gil Petroleum is going to have to make that determination. Am I correct?
It's the, it's the equivalent of having a DEP on site while the construction's happening, so that's what we are agreeing, I think we have no choice but to do that anyway, so.
Can I just ask a question, maybe it'll help clarify or at least help me clarify? Your remedial action permit does not include the development of the site.
Does not.
Would a new LSRP have to proffer these development plans since de-watering is required?
Anything related to permitting, it would go through DEP and whether they require LSRP If there was reinjection of treated groundwater, yeah, there would be, need to be an LSRP. It depends on what the scenario and what the plan is for the groundwater, or what the ultimate-
I guess here's where I'm lost. You're going to submit a remedial action permit.
Correct.
That doesn't involve the site development, correct?
Correct.
So you're, I understand what you're doing if the site were to stay vacant and abandoned as it is today. When Gil Petroleum comes in and develops the site, we know based upon the cuts of the site that they're going to hit groundwater.
Right.
At what point do they then need their own LSRP, who maybe should be here as part of the development application, talking about the de-watering process?
That remedial action permit that I sign will stay with the property no matter what happens. That's the warning, the institutional control that there is contamination.
Do you stay as the LSRP even though ownership changes?
For BP. BP is the responsible party. They're responsible for the impact from that 2008 release. They're responsible for the impact from that 2008 release, regardless of who owns the property going forward.
So if the groundwater contamination was not properly monitored, or in the two options you gave, you are ultimately going to be held responsible for that?
Yes, actually BP.
Can I just follow up on her question? So you go in, let's just assume right now, to humor me, that the option is to pump the groundwater out to storage on site, right? When you get all done with your construction and you stop the pumping and the groundwater rises back up to its previous level, is there any possibility that the construction activities will affect how the pollutants, if you will, are going to be on site? Let me rephrase it a little clearer. Is there any possibility that the construction activity can cause the pollutants to migrate off the site?
No. Not unless groundwater or pumped groundwater was improperly handled. That would be the only potential.
And if impacted soil is found during construction, it is BP's responsibility to remediate that soil, correct?
Correct.
Okay. And you have, the RIR was submitted by the prior LSRP?
That's correct.
Do you foresee the department with submittal of the remedial action permit requesting vertical delineation of a well?
I don't believe so.
Nick, could you put that in English for us?
So what a remedial investigation report is, an RIR, LSRP's like acronyms, is your document is saying that you're delineated on the site, so you know the extent horizontally and vertically. Typically, when you put in monitoring wells to check on the status of groundwater, especially for BTACs, gasoline-type constituents, they're shallow wells, you're checking the upper aquifer. There may be a thing where the DEP may request vertical delineation. I've seen it in the past. I'm not saying it's necessary on this, it depends on who. The remedial action permit is ultimately approved by the DEP. It's one of the things that DEP still has in their wheelhouse, but, you know, I've seen these files. I think it was definitely done right, but the DEP may disagree.
Are you satisfied with what you see so far and what you hear?
Yes, yes.
Does the board have any other questions?
Nick, just one more question. Does the township have any officials that are certified in your capacity?
No.
Now, this would have to be the privately hired LSRP. And that's why I've asked to have that as a condition of the resolution. All right, if there are no questions from the board, I'd like to open up the application right now. This is for questions of this witness, questions. If Mr. Gazarovski's coming up first, and then questions, you can do your testimony after, okay?
Chairman, thank you very much. I've sat and I've listened to the comments of the expert, as well as what I thought was very comprehensive questioning, both by the board as well as by your professionals. I have no further questions.
Questions?
If you want to, no, this is questions only, Ms. Dixel.
I would like to give out, I would like to give out-
This is only questions.
Question, I will give you an opportunity to do your testimony.
Are your exhibits?
Yes, directly.
No, I haven't asked my question yet. Do your exhibits relate to the questions? Like, does the professionally need to see the exhibits in order to answer your questions?
If you want, so, yes. Yes. I'll give you one.
No, 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 that's not. So this is just for questions. It's not whether you like or dislike the testimony. So do you have questions of Mr. Simon? All right, so why don't we get, you still need to put your name on the record and your address, so let's do that. You don't need to be sworn, because you'll be sworn later. Right now, you're just asking questions, so it's not testimony, so it doesn't need to be sworn, but we just need to know who you are.
My name is Barbara Dixel. I live at 628 Piazza Vittoria, Freehold, New Jersey, The Villages.
Okay. You can sit if you want, Ms. Dixel.
No, 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 I better work on this.
Okay.
Sir. When I saw you, I came to the Environmental Commission that night, they were there. And I brought my information with me, and this gentleman gave his testimony, and they were, gave the Environmental Commission remediation reports, and I live there. I see the gas station every day. There has not been remediation, eight person, eight truck, a DEP in two years. Every single day, I look at the door and there it is. So I asked this gentleman, "Well, what are you remediating?" And he says, "Well, remediating," I said, "What truck? What kind of information? Where are you going to put this?" And finally, this gentleman got so exasperated, he said, "We're remediating with a SUV," and he walked out. That's my first thing.
Well, but is there a question that you're going to ask?
Yes, how can you say that? You were remediating with an SUV when you walked out the door.
You don't have to answer that. Forgetting about the, forgetting about the, how she characterized how the meeting went, the question was, what are you, how are you remediating? If there is any remediation currently going on, or is it simply monitoring?
Monitoring.
So you're letting the soil naturally remediate itself?
Groundwater.
Groundwater, I'm sorry.
Now, another question is, you say that, to your knowledge, the gasoline leak or the contamination has not gone offsite.
Correct.
Correct? Okay. I'm holding the map that StanTech or Walter Huford or whatever gave me. They flew Ryan Turner in from North Carolina to meet with me on the site. When he left, he left me the map.
All right, let's, are you going to ask him a question about the map?
Yes, yes.
All right, so first give the map to Mr. Alfieri, so he can take a look at it.
I'll give it one, you can get it back to me.
Okay. We just need to wait to see if Mr. Alfieri has any objections to the entry of that map into evidence. Mr. Gazarovski, do you care to take a look, or no? Or you left? I guess not.
As long as it's not introduced into evidence.
Why not?
Because I need to understand a little more as to, there's handwriting all over this. We need to know who wrote it.
I did. This is the contamination-
Well, hold, Ms. Dixel. So Mr. Alfieri may have an objection to that evidence. I didn't, I don't know who the people are that you just mentioned, so why don't you explain to us what that is and who prepared it?
It was either StanTech or BP, but they flew it, because I got, when I got word of the leak, our vice president of the village just walked up to my house and gave me his letter that was sent to him by the DEP. And he says, "Here, Barbara, fix it." So I've been trying to fix it. Okay, so I called up the DEP, I called up StanTech, and we did a Google Earth and-
Well, let's just, who is StanTech?
StanTech is, works for BP, I think they're the environmental people from BP, for the-
All right, let's let them confirm that. Is that, do we know if that's an accurate statement?
We don't, we don't know. I just, they may have been a prior consultant of BP, I don't know.
Okay, do you know when this was done, Ms. Dixel?
Yeah, when they had the leak, was the property-
The map, the map is from 2009.
Okay.
The concern I have with the exhibit is, there's handwriting on it that Mayor-
Well, I think Ms. Dixel is saying that's her handwriting.
Right, I understand. So the issue is, as long as we're not stipulating that the handwriting that she wrote is factually accurate, we're not stipulating that groundwater 10 feet deep-
Well, I think what we can say is that the exhibit as prepared, if it was prepared by StanTech, was not inclusive of Ms. Dixel's handwriting and comments. Those are her comments, those are her beliefs, but they do not necessarily reflect the findings or the exhibit that was prepared.
It's StanTech, StanTech is-
Okay. Well, Mr. Alfieri is saying is he wanted to be clear that the handwriting was not StanTech's.
Right.
Okay, so just, Ms. Dixel, if you can bring that up to me now, so we can mark it.
Just, yeah, just theories of, yeah, it goes with that. I just have-
Okay, so we will mark this as, we'll mark this as P1, public 1.
Can I just ask a question?
Just one moment, we're still marking it in. This is a data, or a date fact sheet prepared August 25, 2009. Says it's a public notice fact sheet. And Ms. Dixel, you're saying that it was prepared by StanTech?
StanTech gave me this. They flew Ryan Turner in from North Carolina to meet with me.
Okay, okay, that's fine. And it has a map attached called a groundwater elevation contour map dated March 25, 2009, and will mark as P2. And it's a historic soil sample results dated April, comma, September, and November 2003. And this appears to have been prepared by an organization called SECOR, S-E-C-O-R. And they were from Exton, Pennsylvania. Are these copies? Ms. Dixel, can we keep these, since they've been marked?
I have one for everybody. I have a copy for everybody.
Okay.
I guess you can take that one. I just don't want to run short.
Okay, go ahead.
All right, sir, are you aware that the gasoline contamination on the gas stations, left the gas stations and crossed Wyckoff Mills Road and went to the river?
I don't have any information indicating that it reached the river.
Well, I'm sure, this is the map that they gave me from StanTech, when the guy was flying from North Carolina to meet with me. This is the map, it left, can I get one of these out to everybody?
If I could see analytical data.
Everybody, everybody, let's-
Make it easier.
Okay. You have copies you want to give out? Just give them to Eileen, and Eileen can do that.
Mr. Cuciaro?
Yes.
I have a little concern here, all right? In that, our professionals have not seen this to make a determination if the testimony
Well, there's no testimony from Ms. Dixel. I mean, she's permitted to bring whatever she wants to assist in the cross-examination.
Well, she's asking questions based upon this.
There's no requirement that she submit them in advance. And she's permitted under the law to use whatever she would like to assist in her cross-examination. What I'd say is, we're not finishing tonight, so to the extent that Mr. Alfieri wants to provide greater comments on it, or the board's professionals want to look at it in greater detail, I agree. It's not, you know, it may be difficult for the board to accept or reject the accuracy or the relevancy of the documents, but she has a right to introduce what she'd like to assist in her cross-examination.
Okay, because I've asked our environmental consult, sorry, not consultant, Environmental Commission contact liaison, and according to Mr. Cusser, the Environmental Commission has not seen this material.
I have not seen this, I have not seen this StanTech.
I brought it with me, I get-
Well, just, I want to reiterate, though, you know, a member of the public is not required to go and submit anything like that. A member of the public, though, takes chances, you know, depending upon how information is submitted as to what weight the board is going to give it. So I think all of your concerns are very accurate, but they go towards weight of the evidence rather than the admissibility of the evidence.
Another map I have from the same, StanTech, shows every monitoring well on the gas station would not have been tested.
Well, just, Ms. Dixel, let's stick to what it is that you were seeking to introduce. Now, I don't think you've given those copies to Eileen yet. So let's give them to Eileen.
Exactly what I want to do.
Just the P1 and P2, Ms. Dixel. Just the ones that you gave before.
That we've entered already.
What else do you have? How many other documents?
Two.
So what is it that is going to assist you in asking questions tonight of these documents? That's what we need.
Well, I would like to, Mr. Cuciaro, this is the, this is the text that were removed. I'd like to know, this is the site, the soil-
Well, just, let's just stop there. Please give that to Mr. Alfieri.
Are we finished with the first map that was?
I would love to finish that.
Well, the problem is that Ms. Dixel wants to distribute these documents to the board, but they're not, they're in stacks with all other documents.
And for clarification purposes, this, who took this photograph?
I did.
When was it taken?
When they dug up the tanks and they took the lateral, piping laterals out of the contaminated area that were there to remediate the stuff in the ground.
That's in '08 or '09, I guess, right? And then the handwriting is yours?
Yes, mine.
You know, thinking about it, Mr. Chairman, I think, does the board desire right now to see all these documents? Or can you base it upon what Ms. Dixel is saying and then just take them at the end? Because otherwise, we're going to need to go through each one of these documents right now, rather than-
Well, I would ask Ms. Dixel, would, you say you're going to provide testimony.
Yeah, this is all I have, right? This is all I have.
Would you have any objection as to waiting and distributing the complete package rather than trying to take this apart, when, and then testify from that?
Well, but the thing is, if she's using it to ask questions, then we got to mark it. So to do what you're saying, Ms. Dixel could not refer to these documents during her questioning.
I'll, I'll wait until you want me to just attest to-
No, it's not about what we want, it's about how you want to do it.
I think that the board, my opinion, all right, I'll poll my board, I would like to see these documents as she asks the question of the-
All right, so then we need to, we need to mark these in now, then.
Mr. Chairman.
Okay.
I respectfully want to tell you that there's some very serious contamination things on here, on this station, that, you know, may and may not affect the villages, when and if this thing gets done.
Well, that's what we're trying to understand, all right?
But I have all these-
And that's, right, and what I just said to Mr. Cuciaro is that we're going to take these packages apart, however long it takes, so that as you ask the questions to the LSRP, that the board has the same material in front of us, so we understand and can appreciate what you're saying.
I've taken all the pictures and all the handwriting.
Well, just, Ms. Dixel, let's deal with this one now. So we're going to mark this P3. This is a color photograph of the subject's site, taken September-
Why don't I just get all this out?
You can't, Ms. Dixel. We have to mark it, we have a process we have to follow. So if you want to refer to them, we have to mark them in. Mr. Alfieri has an absolute right to object to any one of them, and that's the process we have to follow. We're a quasi-judicial board, we have rules. It's a color photograph, marked September 20, 2018, with written comments from Ms. Dixel, we're marking this as P3.
Can I just have that so I can refer to it, I don't have to take a part of that package? I'll give it to you.
Well, we need to keep, Ms. Dixel, when you're entering evidence, we need to keep it. So what else are you anticipating asking questions based upon? Mr. Chair, can I make a recommendation?
Yes, sir.
Perhaps, you know, if we take a five-minute recess, Ms. Dixel can get all the stuff she needs together, so that we can just run through it. And we'd probably be a little more expeditious that way.
Okay, and I'd like to also talk with Mr. Cohen during the recess, or the break.
Talk to who? Oh, okay, right.
All right, the board's going to take a five-minute recess. I'd like to reconvene the planning board meeting. Just one thing, Mr. Alfieri, before we start, there's another application that is on our agenda for tonight. It's case number SD 2985, Rosemary Byrd. Mr. Cohen?
Yes, sir.
Given the amount of testimony that's going to go on with this application, I don't think that we're going to get to your application, so we would like to carry you to the February 21st meeting.
That'll be fun.
And you will be first on the agenda.
Thank you so much, and I believe we're within the timeframe. We don't need to give an extension at this time.
You are. You're good till May 3rd.
Very good, thank you.
When are we carrying this to?
February 21st.
So the application of Rosemary Byrd, SD 2985, be carried to the board's February 21st, 2019 meeting, beginning seven o'clock here, the main meeting room in Town Hall. There'll be no further notice to property owners.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman.
Chris Kettlefellow, I'm at 485 Newtons Corner Road. I just want to verify, because you made a statement that there'll be no further notice, the Rosemary Byrd's application to property owners, so the February 21st date, if it happens to change, will we be notified?
Well, you, we can't change it. If we do change it, you would be notified at that meeting. We wouldn't select a new date until that meeting.
At that particular meeting, will be...
If there's a new date that's...
Nothing that can change from now until that meeting.
That's correct. We've carried it to that. If something changes, then they do have to provide you a new notice in the mail.
Okay, thank you. I, I just want to verify, because last time I got blindsided by that. Okay, thank you.
All right, so we're back to Gil Petroleum now, Mr. Chairman. Okay, so Ms. Dixiel, I know you've been working to assemble the, the pile of documents that you'd like...
I took it all for.
Okay, so do you have a stack that you can give me and we can just run through it and enter things?
And you, and you'll give it out to the...
Well, let's, let's do things...
That's already been marked, I think, as P3.
Yes.
This is one that I need.
No, Ms. Dixiel. I need the stack of new things that you want to enter. Ms. Dixiel, no. We've entered this. What we asked you to do was put together the, the, the documents that you want to rely upon, and we'll enter them in. Do you have the documents that you want? No, you cannot until we enter it in. That's what we're trying to do. No, we've entered this. So if you want to do P1, P2, and P, so these are all the new documents. Okay. Do you have, this is the same document, Ms. Dixiel? These are all different documents?
They're all the same.
Ms. Dixiel, I need one document of each thing that you want to enter. All right, so give me, give me one of each, and then give Mr. Alfieri one of each. So this is, this is everything? Okay. Mr. Alfieri, can you just sort of take one from each stack? And we'll go through it.
What's the, I saw the list of contaminated sites, right?
Yeah. And then? Chapter 188, yeah.
Seventy percent chance of snow at nine o'clock.
Here's this.
Here.
Here's this. And you have this?
Nobody can be wrong so many times.
Okay, so Mr. Alfieri, I'm going to start with what Ms. Dixiel has labeled as the NJDEP list of contaminated sites.
That's no objection.
All right, so we will mark that as P4. We have what appears to be a copy of chapter 188, Article 9, zoning requirements, 188-54, corner lots, and it goes down, I, I assume it's Article 11, conditional uses, service stations, 188-87, that Ms. Dixiel is going to reference. Dated September 27th, 2017. I don't think there's been an amendment to that ordinance since that date. Any objections, Mr. Alfieri? And it has some of Ms. Dixiel's written comments on it as well.
No objection.
Okay, this will be P5. Okay, we have a plan titled, well, I think we've already entered this, haven't we, groundwater elevation, and we'll enter it again, groundwater elevation contour map dated March 25th, 2009.
Sheet 12, we do have it. It's part of this one.
Okay, is this, is this the same written comments, or are these different written comments? Okay, so we've already marked, we've already marked this one.
That's P1.
Okay, that's part of P1. Okay, so the next document is a plan labeled groundwater contour map dated July 19th, 2013, prepared by EnviroTrak, with comments from Ms. Dixiel. Her comments are, or she has dated it July 19th, 2013 as well. There's also, she has a date of September 20th, 2018 on it. Any objections to that, Mr.?
No.
Okay, P6. We have a, a package of one, two, three pages containing, one, two, three, eight color photographs, also with Ms. Dixiel's comments on them. No, this is fine. This, this is fine. Okay. Yeah, yeah, this, this is different than that. When were these photos taken, Ms. Dixiel?
On the gas station?
The, the, these?
Yom Kippur. This, this Yom Kippur.
So 2018?
Yes.
So September 2018? Right, right. Okay, Mr. Alfieri, any objections?
No, no objections yet, until I understand more about it, but I believe they're accurate photos.
This will be P7. Okay, we also have a two-page document with one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine color photographs, also with comments from Mrs. Dixiel. Mrs. Dixiel, when did you take these photographs?
When they put the monitoring wells in on the village's property, on the village's property.
Right, do you know when that was? You seem to have marked 2012 on one of them. Is that, is that accurate? Well, then, all we need to know is 2012, okay. So, Mr. Alfieri?
No objection.
Okay, P8. All right, so we've marked P1 through P8. Ms. Dixiel, I think you're ready to go. No, you can. If you want, if you want to give them to Eileen to pass out, you can do that.
Are these in any sequence for?
This is a soil, soil samples, and they don't show any impact.
Okay. You got it, buddy?
What are these numbers mean?
Non-detect.
So there's nothing that...
So, kilograms or micro... Forty-nine, which was not exceeded, so it's not showing any analysis. It's not represented anymore.
Do you have everything? Eileen, can I please borrow back one copy of just the public soil? I don't have it. Borrow it back and give it right back to you.
Mrs. Dixiel, which one do you need? Ron, Ron, can you just tell us what's been marked, what?
These were, okay, hold on.
Eileen, if you have one of those for me, I'd appreciate it. I gave you everything.
One says page five, one says page 12.
I got page 12. I got 12.
Just let me tell them which is which. The large sheet that says five on the bottom, page five, that is P2. Sheet 12 is P1. The list of contaminated sites spreadsheet is P4. The zoning ordinance is P5. The large list of photos is P8. I don't think I got any of these. Do you have them for the board?
Do you have two pages?
The two pages of photos, that's P8. You guys didn't get the photos of the gas station, right?
Yeah, we did.
Okay, I'm sorry, that's P7.
That's, um, that's one, two, three pages?
Three pages, and that's P7. The one sheet with just one photo?
Yep.
Like that, that is P3.
There you go, Chief.
And did you guys get an EnviroTech map?
Yes.
That is P6. And I think that's everything.
So the zoning ordinance is P5. P5. So P1, P2, P3. Was P4? Was P5?
P5 is the ordinance, chapter 188 of land use.
Yes, thank you. Yeah, P4 is this, this is a spreadsheet. And 6 is this map. All right, you guys ready? All right, let's see what your questions is.
First question, are you all aware that, sir, are you all aware that this gas station is still on the active contaminator list?
Hold up, hold up. Mr. Simon, did you, did you hear the question?
Yes.
Okay, what, and your answer?
It's common practice, until the site gets either a no further action letter or a limited RAO, then it will get pulled off of the list once the case is closed.
Do you know the, um, how, they, they constantly update as, as sites come on and drop off, correct?
Absolutely, yes.
Would you happen to know approximately when this list is, is generated from?
Uh, this is, uh, this is not a list that I'm familiar with currently. You could go onto NJDEP's website, there's a link called NJDEP Data Miner. You can search by either the, the address of the site or a preferred ID number, and it'll tell you generally all the specifics you need to know, where the site is in the remediation process, and general information on who to contact for additional info. It's all, it's all public record.
Mr. Chairman, it's usually updated monthly, my understanding is, by the department. And it's common practice, if the site hasn't been closed, to be on this list.
Right, understood. Do, do you know when this list was generated?
I, I check it all the time. It's on there.
So is this, are you representing this as a current list?
It's not exactly current, but it's on, I, I sent it a month or two ago, but it's on there.
Well, Mr. Simon, you're not disputing that the site would still be identified as a contaminated site on the, on the DEP website?
I'm not disputing.
Okay, so...
Gentlemen, this, one picture of the ground, when the leak occurred, it went into the soil and groundwater. Are you familiar with that, sir? And when they dug up the tanks, they realized that the leak was worse than they thought, so it went further into the groundwater and soil.
And this is from what year?
2000, oh, it's another, I took this, oh, I don't know, September, no, it's... Two thousand, oh, it's another, I took this, oh, I don't know, September, no, September twenty, two thousand eighteen, though it had to be, well, I don't know, maybe September tw- two thousand twelve. Two thousand twelve.
All right, so what's, what's the question again, Ms. Dixell?
I just, when I developed the picture, so I just...
Okay, but what is your question?
The question is, are you aware of the fact that this is exactly where the tanks were when they dug them up? That the contamination went into the soil and groundwater?
Mr. Simon?
Uh, that's the one I don't have.
Sure, okay.
And if they realized...
Well, let's let Mr. Simon answer the question.
I mean, I, I don't know from the date of this, uh, there's no date on the photograph when it was actually taken, it was handwritten here. I can comment to say that in two thousand and eight, there was a UST removal report that was submitted to the DEP that documented the removal of three USTs along with approximately twenty to twenty-five cubic yards of impacted soil at that time.
And also...
Just, just, one second, would they replace that impacted soil with sand?
Clean soil, certified clean, so it could be sand, it could be tested clean. Uh, there is a document that was submitted to NJDEP that has clean fill tickets in there proving that it was backfilled with clean soil.
Are you aware that I took this photo between two thousand nine and two thousand twelve when they were actively working and digging up the site? And they had to put more sand on top?
Well, but that, that's testimony, Ms. Dixell, so...
Okay, I'm sorry. Okay.
You're gonna be able to do it, just, just during the public portion.
All right, sir, are you aware that this is the map that was handed to me when they came from North Carolina that actually shows the gas station and the monitoring wells and the line where the contamination crossed White Fork Road and went to the river?
So your, your question is whether he's aware of whether that map depicts the information that you just stated? Okay.
Which one? Which, which map is she...
This is P-two.
What number is on this, the bottom? Five or twelve?
That's number five.
Twelve, twelve.
Twelve.
We don't, we only have five.
That's the same.
All right, that's P-one.
P-one.
Bottom of the page says twelve, but it's P-one exhibit.
So the question is, is he aware that this map indicates that there was contamination that left the site?
Yes. It's contamination that left the site that crossed White Fork Road.
Well, let's let him answer the question now, Mrs. Dixell.
Uh, there is no analytical data provided on this map. I, I can't comment.
I had to give my husband everything else, so I...
So, Ms. Dixell, how do we know what you're saying is correct?
Well, she's not making a statement, she's asking a question.
All right.
So, and...
Okay, so how...
This was told to me when the Ryan Turner from Stan Tech came in.
But this is getting into testimony. I think this is appropriate, but I think during the public portion, or else we're gonna have to swear, Ms. Dixellin, and, and instead of asking questions, you know, have her give testimony. She asked a discreet question about whether the professional agreed with what she characterized the plan showing, and he said he was not able to.
Agreed.
Sir, are you aware that this line is not from me? The line is from Stan Tech that they drew of the, of the contamination going down to the river?
He would not be aware.
Well, I'm just, okay. But you, you're saying that you are not aware of any contamination leaving the site, and here it is.
Well, I guess the question is, do you, in your professional opinion, Mr. Simon, agree that that exhibit depicts contamination leaving the site?
I do not agree because it's not part of a larger report. I don't have all the facts. And is there anything on that, that map that indicates that there was contamination leaving the site? No, there's no analytical data to indicate that it was leaving the site.
Can I have the map that's got all the wells and all the contamination on it? Lots of, every well has the box of contamination on it.
Let's just, this is P-two, right?
Okay. All right, gentlemen, are you, okay, this is the other map that shows all the boxes of all the wells with the amounts of contamination.
What's the question?
Are you aware that, again, this line that comes down here was drawn from Stan Tech, not me? It went right, that's the, it's, this is the...
Well, Ms. Dixell, is your question whether the professional agrees that that exhibit depicts contamination from the wells? Is that what you're asking him?
I, I am, but...
Okay, no, let's, let's let him answer now.
That's an uncontrolled copy of a figure from a report.
What do you mean, an uncontrolled copy?
This is not part of the larger report. There's handwriting over the, all over the report that I do not know who wrote on it. This is also a map of soil sample results, not groundwater results, and it largely shows data on this map as being non-detect. What does that mean? That means not detected above a reporting limit, which these reporting limits are below soil cleanup quality criteria. There was one localized exceedance of MTBE within the boundary of the site at MW seven, but again, this is a map from two thousand and three, and a lot has happened since then.
There's been nobody on the site, period. I live there, I see it every day. Are you aware of the EnviroTech, EnviroTech map?
That's, um, P-six.
Okay, the EnviroTech map has the contaminated well on it, as well number two. That's still contaminated. I actually have it in one of my written reports, it was either from, um...
There's no data.
I understand. So...
That well is being addressed as part of the classification exception area on the site and is being monitored for monitor natural attenuation.
Who's on the site, sir? Who's been on the site? I live there, I see it every day. There's nobody, nothing.
Ms. Dixell, let's, let's let him answer.
I thought I just did. How are the wells, how is the monitoring data collected? Typically quarterly, and then it went down to semi-annually. Does someone go to the site? Yes.
No comments. Okay, so this...
It's all detailed in my, well, the remedial action report that was submitted.
This is from EnviroTech, this is the previous LSRP? EnviroTech? I'm showing you the pictures of the monitoring wells that left the gas station, that crossed White Fork, that contaminated the villagers' property on the outside of the villages. These are monitoring wells that are still there. They're buried over with dirt, but they're there.
What's the question?
Are you aware of the fact there are, that there are monitoring wells on the villagers' property?
Okay.
That to, uh, monitor any possible contamination that may be still there, and the largest one...
Well, let's, that's, let's, let's just, Mr., um...
Simon.
Simon, are you aware of any monitoring wells located on the villagers' property associated with the contamination on your client's property?
There could have been wells throughout the course of the investigation, but I'm not aware of any contaminated wells off the, uh, property.
This is, this is...
From taking a look at this, Ron, if I may, um, the two, the two photos on the bottom are not monitoring wells.
Yeah, definitely a manhole.
There, there's some type of utility manhole.
So I guess, Mr. Simon, do you, do you agree that that exhibit does not depict any monitoring wells?
There are some, I'm sure.
Let's let Mr. Simon answer.
Yeah, there's two pictures that clearly depict monitoring wells.
Which pictures are those?
The, uh, top two on the right side. On page two. On page two. Uh, they're similar size and dimension of monitoring wells from the, uh, bottom two on the right side. Uh, the two on the left side, I would not characterize as monitoring wells.
Okay, but in answer to Ms. Dixell's question, you stated that you were not aware of any monitoring wells on the villagers' property, is that, is that what you said?
I'm not aware of there being any contaminated wells on that property.
How would, if, if there were contaminated wells, would that have come to your attention in some manner?
That would have been incorporated into our classification exception area that was submitted along with our remedial action report.
Why is that? Why would that have been included?
Because we are, or BP is obligated, because it's, it would have been an impacted well above a cleanup standard that they were, would have been required to address.
So I think, just to clarify, did BP put the wells there to make sure that contamination didn't migrate?
I need to double-check, I need to see what the ID of the well is and if it matches up with the ID of the wells that BP has installed.
Because I think there's two different questions. You're answering that there's no contamination that went off, but clearly there's monitoring wells there. It was, it was put there for a reason, and it may have been to, at some point, to ensure that there was no migration of contamination.
Quite possible, but I would like to cross-reference those wells with an actual well ID to make sure BP does own those.
So Sal, in the event, I, I know that, I, I'm not sure that your LSRP was available again, but you will get that answer?
Yes.
Thank you.
I, I, I have a feeling it might, it might have been either, there were several, either EnviroTech or Petroscience.
Well, he's gonna, he's gonna investigate it. He's, he's going to investigate it and provide us with an answer to subsequent hearing.
Okay, I have another photo here of the top of the gas station with the site and the piping laterals in the ground that were put there through, by either EnviroTech or Petroscience to monitor the contamination in the ground from the gasoline leak and to put, um, conta, put stuff in there to break down the contamination. You can see the white monitoring, the white piping laterals are there. And one day...
Well, what's, what's the question to, Mr. Simon?
In other words, are you aware? I'm just showing you also that to be aware, that the piping laterals were there.
Well, are you asking him whether he's aware that the piping laterals?
Are you aware that any of this was there?
And what is the purpose of those pipes? I would need to go back to the report and see what they, uh...
That they were put there to mitigate...
Well, no, Mrs. Dixell, that, that is testimony, so you can ask him, do you believe those were put there to mitigate whatever?
Do, do you believe that these water, the piping laterals were put there to mitigate the contamination in, in the ground that was so severe that it went into the groundwater and soil worse than they thought it would, thought it did?
Well, he can't know what they thought, but do you know what those pipes are? Uh, I could speculate at best at this point. Uh, this is an old photograph. I would need to look at the old report to see if there was any reference to any type of pipes or whatever they could have been in that area where the tanks were, to see what their purpose was.
The top picture, sir, if you're real, I took that in two thousand nine, when all of this was immediately happening.
That is, uh, two thousand nine, would have been the year, uh, the years following the UST removal. There was some active groundwater remediation done via incitue chemical oxidation. Uh, I can't comment as to whether these vertical pipes were a part of that, but I can say, given that timeframe, there was some active groundwater remediation that occurred.
Okay, since you're in charge of this, are you aware that the piping laterals one day disappeared? And I kept asking questions and I never got an answer. Everybody said it was either EnviroTech or Petro...
The question is, are you, is he aware that those laterals are no longer there?
Yeah, they're no longer there, then all of a sudden they said they're...
All right, is that, is that information that you are aware of, Mr. Simon?
I don't believe they are there, I would need to double-check.
Okay.
Would you also agree that the piping laterals or some type of monitoring system must be on these, this sand to mitigate any contamination that may be left?
They would not...
Because, because right now, sir, there's nothing there, so...
Well, I think he was trying to answer, Mr. Simon?
They would serve no purpose for a classification exception area for monitor natural attenuation. They don't appear to be a monitoring well or constructed the way a monitoring well should be.
But these were piping laterals, sir, are you aware that were put in by the last LSRP's that were there? And they were there specifically to, um, monitor or guess or count, um, any, uh, serious contamination that was in the ground and when it, all of this took place.
I would have to double-check that report.
Okay, now, I'm gonna go to the top picture, these... I'm gonna go to this one.
This is hard to cross-reference on that.
You have that, Mr., you have that, Sal? Yeah, okay.
This is P-seven, Mr. Chair.
Okay, are you aware of anything to do with the pictures on this gas station that I took? Do you have any recollection of that or any knowledge of this?
No, I don't.
Okay. Young Kipper this year, we came home from the synagogue, and on the gas station was this white van. We pulled up on the gas station, and I got out of the truck and said, "Who are you? What are you doing here? You don't belong here." And the gentleman in the truck said, "I'm working on my computer." Okay, so we went home, we had our dinner. We came back out to look, and there, again, was this truck. My husband said, "It turns out to be a rented truck," but we, this is a truck. And I, I went up and knocked on the truck door, and I said, "Sir, can I ask you again, what is your reason for being on this station? I'm working with, on my computer." I asked the gentleman, "Are you doing remediation work on the contamination on the station with your truck? Is this a Google Earth or something, and I don't know, the guy, I'm doing work on my truck?" I said, "Okay."
Well, what's, what's the question for Mr. Simon, though?
Are you aware of any remediation being done on this gas station from this truck? Because we got told twice that, "I'm doing work," and, and he was sitting there all day.
All right, we, we understand that. So, Mr. Simon, are you familiar with that truck?
We, uh, my company does not typically rent from United Rentals, so I don't believe this is one of our trucks. And then just to follow up, was there any remediation taking place in two thousand and eighteen on the property? If there was, it would have been groundwater sampling. But no remediation, you're talking about sampling only? Yeah, and then no, no movement of soil or anything, no.
So you're not aware of any, um, computer-based driven remediation being done on that gas station on Young Kipper Day?
No, that's, uh, obvious.
Because the guy was sitting on station with his computer pointed to the soil.
Let's let him answer the question.
Yeah, this is not one of my staff members out here.
Okay.
This is not.
All right, I'm gonna go to the ordinance. The ordinance for service station, gentlemen, do you have the ordinance?
Wait, he's, he's not a, is it an environmental question?
The zoning question, environmental question.
Well, yeah, the zoning question you could probably ask to the engineer or if there's a planner, but this, Mr. Simon is only here to talk about remediation and environmental.
All right, Mr. Cottrell, but he did mention Exxon, and so there is a, a, a...
He mentioned, I'm sorry, what?
He did mention Exxon and this station, and there is a definite ordinance that says they must be twenty-five hundred feet away from each other on the same...
Well, but that's, I'm not saying that's an, I'm not saying that that's not a, it's just not an environmental question. So I would save it for probably the engineer.
All right, well, he did, and, all right, and... All gas stations have to be on the corner locks. Can't be in the middle of the lock.
Well, he's not here to testify to that. That's not his area of expertise that the board has accepted. But I'm not saying you can't ask it, it's just not to this witness.
So, so, yeah, here's the thing with EnviroTech. Okay, so, gentlemen, I've given you, yes, all the questions I think I want to ask, and I'm gonna ask you one more thing. This application is a detriment to the public good. It may possibly...
Well, but that, that, that testimony... Please wait for the public session.
Please wait for the public session.
Okay, so I can't ask that it be...
That's not a question, that was a statement.
Okay, so I can't ask that it be, can I ask that it be tonight?
No, that's, no, that's not a question for this applicant.
Okay.
But you're gonna have an opportunity, like the chairman said, to make whatever statements you want, but it's during the public testimony section.
And that won't be tonight?
No, because they're not gonna finish tonight.
All right, so like I said, please hold on to all of my hard work, because I have to go find all these photographs.
No, it is, it is part of the record, Mrs. Dixell. So we have it, it's marked, and it will be in Eileen's office.
I don't wanna have to go through all my pictures and copy them.
No, no, we have it now.
All right, thank you all very much. I appreciate your patience.
Thank you, Mrs. Dixell.
I'm not, I'm not an attorney, so I'm not used to doing a lot of this stuff. Hold on.
Is there anyone else from the public who would like to come up and ask questions?
Can you, sir, if you could just state and spell your name and give us your address?
I'm John Woolley, Woolley's Fish Market, 655 Route 9, Howe.
Mr. Woolley, questions?
Yes, I applaud the company doing all their environmental work, and Mr. Simon has had a lot of good testimony here, but I'm just concerned because the villagers are concerned about the groundwater.
Mr. Woolley, that's testimony. Do you have, do you have questions?
Yes.
Okay.
Is it possible to install some groundwater wells adjacent to my property so I know that there is no gasoline below my property as well as along the adjoining line of the villagers' property? Why wouldn't you want to do that?
Well, you're assuming that they haven't done that. Are there, where are the, do you have a plan that shows where the wells are?
The remedial action report that was submitted shows where the wells, yeah, the wells are.
You keep saying that the remedial action report was submitted. Was that submitted to this board?
NJDEP, I have not submitted it to the board.
All right, can you submit it, since now we've referenced that document, you know, many times? Can you submit that to the board after the meeting tonight?
Yes.
Okay.
Do you know if there's monitoring, you know where Mr. Woolley's property is? He's to the right of that map that's on the screen.
That's the opposite flow of groundwater, for what I recall, so he would be up gradient. So if anything, source-wise from the tanks would have been going towards the opposite direction.
So groundwater flows from north to south?
Yes.
That's why it went to the river. That's why it forced over.
How do we know this? I think it's, I think we need to put monitoring wells in.
Mr. Simon, can you testify as to why or why not that monitoring wells would be on the Woolley property?
The investigation progressed in a stepwise fashion until the leading edge of contamination was delineated. So at that point, the regulations and guidance basically indicate that the investigation is complete, that groundwater is delineated. And at that point, through additional monitoring, which we have done and which is described in the remedial action report, clearly show that the limited contamination is within the property boundaries of the gas station property. And over the time that it will take for those contaminants to degrade, they will not reach our Sentinel well, which is towards the tip of the property southwise, and which means the contamination will not go off-site.
Okay, who did the delineation report, and where is that?
That was EnviroTrack. That was a remedial investigation report, and that was submitted to NJDEP as well.
Do we have that copy of that?
I'm sure I do.
That was probably submitted, that was submitted some time ago and presented to the Environmental Commission as well.
It's also all public record, you could request from the DEP, yeah, through an open request.
Well, is that, since you're providing us the other document, is there a problem submitting that as well?
No, just can you identify exactly what it is you're asking for? Which document?
I referenced the remedial investigation report on EnviroTrack.
Yes, we'll provide it.
Okay.
Excellent, thanks so much.
Yeah, we have.
Sir, you...
Miss Dixell, you have to be, your questions were done, you have to be recognized by the chair again. You had to open it up to the other members of the public.
Is there anyone else from the public who would like to step up and ask questions of this witness? All right, seeing none, we'll close the public portion of this.
She has another question.
Do you have more questions?
One, one question, that's all I have, one question. Are you aware, sir, that the distance on Wyckoff Mills Road between that gas station and the villagers' property is 45 feet? My husband and I went out and pulled the tape. It's not even a...
Well, just, you've asked a question, is that something you're aware of, Mr. Simon?
I'm not really sure what the point of the question is.
Well, you don't need to understand the point of the question, you just need to answer it.
Yeah, without scaling a map off, I can't answer to how many feet it is. I know it's across the street from the site.
This as being a possible danger to the welfare of the villagers.
Well, that's a, that's a statement, Mrs. Dixell.
Okay, fine, okay. Thank you all, gentlemen, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Have a good night. Okay, take two. Is there anyone else who would like to ask questions? Seeing none, we'll close this public, this session. Public questions, session, public questioning of this witness, it's been a long day. Okay, Ms. Alfery, who are your next?
Our next witness is Brian Shortino, our engineer.
Okay, do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give this board is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Please state and spell your name for the record.
First name is Brian, last name is Shortino, S.H.O.R.T.I.N.O.
And Mr. Shortino, by whom are you employed?
I'm employed by Burton Engineering Associates.
And you're a licensed professional engineer in the state of New Jersey?
Yes, I am.
Could you place a little more detail about your credentials on the record, please?
I have an undergraduate degree in landscape architecture from Rutgers University, have a master's of science degree in civil engineering from the New Jersey Institute of Technology. I've been a licensed engineer for, I'm not even sure, 30 years approximately, and also licensed landscape architect.
And have you testified before boards in the state of New Jersey?
Yes, I have.
And are there any, your license is current with the New Jersey State Board?
Yes, it is.
And are there any actions either pending or prior to this application in front of the board?
No.
Okay, we'll accept him as an expert in civil engineering.
And Mr. Shortino, your office prepared the preliminary and final site plan that's been submitted in support of this application?
That's correct.
And that site plan is also on the screen?
Ah, that's...
I'm not sure what sheet, or what sheet is that?
Yeah, that's the site plan drawing.
Three, three. All right, would you describe for the board, from an engineering point of view, what is being proposed as part of the development of this site?
Just in a general sense, what we're proposing to do, the site now has been vacant, there's the remnants of a previous gas station there, the canopy is still there, and the kiosk is still there. What we're proposing to do is a complete demolition of those remaining structures, and the applicant has acquired a portion of parcel to the south, which actually expands the site from what was previously there, and they plan on redeveloping the site with a new convenience store, new canopy and pump island layout, new underground storage tanks, and actually new access on the driveways on New Jersey State Highway Route 9, and also another driveway on Wyckoff Mills Road.
So starting from the southernmost portion of the property, just run through the board, what is proposed as you work north?
Okay, in reference to that, what I'd like to do is I have, actually have an exhibit. I think it's, it'll be more beneficial than looking at the site plan drawing. So if we can, so bring that, we'll bring that up and...
Okay, we've pre-marked some exhibits, so this would be A. 13.
Just make sure it's angled so that they can see it.
Well, also, Ms. Alfery, if you can bring that forward. We're gonna give him the wireless mic.
And Mr. Shortino, would you identify what A. 15 is?
Excuse me?
Identify what A. 15 is.
A. 13. A. 13.
13?
That's it, right, correct?
Sorry, 13.
A. 13. This is what we prepared specifically for tonight's presentation. This is called a landscape rendering. What it is, is it's a graphical representation in color. It's more or less a combination of the site plan and the landscape plan, and we assign colors to specific elements of the, of the site, and it just, we present these at the board meetings, it just gives the public and the board members a better idea of what's being proposed for the site.
So A. 13 is a color rendering of the site plan?
Landscape rendering.
Yes, actually, we do have a title, and the title is landscape rendering.
Okay.
Is there a date on that?
The date is revision, initial date is 1/7/16, and then the revision date is today's date, 1/17/19.
Thank you.
Can everyone see that? All right, again, now, starting from the southern portion of the property, let's work our way north and go through each component.
Okay, so again, I mentioned briefly...
I mentioned briefly that from, from the existing station, the applicant did acquire
a parcel from the DOT at the southernmost portion of the site. So what's proposed, as we move from south to north, is that, again, there's an overall development of the site to include a convenience store, a canopy, new underground storage tanks, and new access. So with respect to the actual orientation of all the elements, on the southernmost portion is we're gonna have some off-street parking, and the underground storage tanks will be located there. That, those are new underground storage tanks, and it's actually a new location from what was previously, where the, excuse me, where the previous tanks were previously installed.
Where were the tanks previously located?
Well, they were located on the subject property. If reference to this graphical representation, they were located, well, if you went to the site now, they were located on the southerly side of the existing canopy.
Where would they be on that map?
They'd be approximately between the new tanks, which is this gray area, and this brownish area, which is the new canopy, they'd be located approximately in between there. So with the, with the location in the southernmost portion and the newer underground storage tanks, because the site has increased in size and due to the layout of the site, we are proposing new driveways along Route 9. They'll function in the same way that the previous driveways did, be a right turn in and a right turn out, just that there's, because we have additional frontage across Route 9, and with the orientation and development of the site plan, that's why there's new driveways proposed, it's just, it's just a function of to make the site work safe and efficiently. So in the center of the site, which is indicated in this, I'll say, light tan color, that's the new canopy. The new canopy would be 62 feet by 62 feet, and there will be six pump islands beneath that canopy, and there's also a kiosk that would be, I'll say, on the easterly side or the easterly row of pump islands, which are essentially parallel to New Jersey State Highway Route 9. So that's where the canopy and pump islands are proposed to be located. Just to backtrack, there was one other item I should have mentioned when we, I mentioned the new location underground storage tanks in that area. We also have a new island, that would be the diesel island. It's specific, it's just the dispensary there would only serve diesel fuel, and then the dispensers and islands underneath the canopy will just serve, service gasoline fuel. So that was one item I failed to mention initially when we were moving from the southerly portion to the north.
I'm sorry, where is that diesel-only?
It's on the easterly side of where the proposed tanks are.
It's not part of the canopy, it's not built into?
No, it's not, there's no canopy above it.
Why is it separate?
Because it's separate because the intent is to keep gasoline service underneath the canopy for motor vehicles. The diesel is a different type of vehicle. Sometimes you have small trucks, sometimes there's a landscaper or it has a trailer. It's just to keep, it's separate so that the large, if it's a larger vehicle, it won't, it won't disrupt the fueling abilities underneath the canopy.
What's the purpose of the canopy, then?
The canopy?
If you don't need a canopy for, my understanding was, you have a canopy to try to minimize rainwater washing away any, any fuel that may have spilled.
Well, it's, it's to provide protection, it's to provide protection when your vehicles are being fueled. Now...
So the diesel doesn't get that same protection as when you're trying to...
No, it doesn't, and we don't expect it to be as used as much as all the activity where the gasoline would be serviced.
Quick question on the diesel, over here. Right here. The, is there gonna be enough clearance, since that's a separate island, if you had a vehicle parked that was fueling with diesel relative to the, the regular stations?
I'm not sure where your question is.
The, if you had a vehicle that was fueling with diesel, and it was parked there, would vehicles be able to, to pass that vehicle and continue to circulate through the site?
Oh, still enter the site? Yes, yes.
Do you know the approximate amount of clearance that you'd have between the diesel station and the, the regular fuel stations? A total distance?
I could, I could scale that distance. There's no physical dimension shown on our plan, but I can give you an estimate.
Do it off that or reset scale?
Okay, from the diesel island to, I'll say, the nearest pump island is approximately 35 feet.
Okay, thank you.
Just to that point, I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, I really think you have to show a diagram because essentially, someone who's fueling at that diesel island is blocking a whole access drive. It's not allocated out to be where someone is fueling, like the canopy area. So if a truck or someone with a large landscape bed is fueling at that diesel area, I think it's gonna impede the flow of traffic and either force a vehicle to encroach under the canopy area just to get around. So I would ask, you know, certainly, as a follow-up, that we be provided a circulation plan which depicts if a vehicle is fueling at that diesel island, that there's adequate drive space around.
Okay, we can provide that. We also have, as part of the site plan set, we do have some, a vehicle circulation plan for the larger trucks, the garbage trucks, so we can reference that later. This, we're just trying to give an overall...
I would, I would also like to know if you would recommend that... I would, I would also like to know if you would recommend that, that diagram be depicted with people also under the canopy filling their, so that we get a full representation, and also maybe the parking lot full, and get an idea of how people would be able to get in and out of the parking area, get in and around the site, if, if in fact they're, all the pumps are full.
Yeah, that's correct, because I have a concern that if you're fueling at the diesel island, you may block the parking area, which is essentially to the left of that, as well as getting around. And I would certainly agree with Mr. Tenonhouse that when I say I wanna see that diagram, I wanna see it with someone fueling at that, underneath the canopy at your first station.
That's fine.
And given that this is Route 9, which is a commercial corridor, all right, I would like to see that with a large weight, large wheel-based vehicle, a tank truck, all right? Because in addition to the concerns that were expressed, I'm concerned about when a fuel truck is dispensing at the three tanks, how that blocks the circulation within the site.
Understood. And again, it's, it's part of the site plan drawings. We have a vehicle, vehicle plan that shows the fuel delivery truck coming through that site and how it would, how it would be situated there. But that's fine, we could do a separate exhibit or drawing and submit it for the board's review.
Yeah, like, for example, on, on your drawing, C-2.5, you're depicting your WB-50 transversing through the site, but it's transversing partially under the canopy, and you may have a car there filling at the time. So, it's tough to, I think you may need to look at those various scenarios, those if-then statements, where, where you may actually have cars filling their fuel under the canopy.
That's, that's fine. Again, we can provide those items.
Thank you.
So-
Well, yeah, hold on. All right. What, what size vehicle are you gonna run that with?
Which, which size?
You're gonna use, you're gonna use the WB-50?
That's what I believe we show in that drawing that was just specified.
All right.
And I believe you're gonna have to show at least that wheelbase accessing your diesel, because that's not a clean diesel that we've seen. This is accessible for trucks, landscape, or anything of that nature, correct?
I'm sorry, I didn't understand your question. When you're in-
Your diesel is not the clean diesel that we've seen on other fueling applications, so a tractor-trailer truck can fuel here?
You mean low-flow?
Low-flow, yes.
Yeah. If, if, it would, it would be able to fit, yes, it would be.
Okay, so, I think we need to see the largest wheelbase that that diesel could service, which is large, if it's not the low-flow diesel.
And how are deliveries accomplished to the convenience store?
That, we have a specific loading zone for that on the right-hand side of the, of the convenience store. It's, it's 10 feet by 60 feet.
So, your intent is to have a large-wheel-based vehicle pull in face-forward and then try to back out when it has to leave the site?
No, that's not the intent. Your ordinance requires a 10-foot by 60-foot loading space, so we provided one. But we don't believe it's, it would be necessary for tractor-trailers to use that to provide deliveries to the convenience store.
What is the largest wheelbase truck that will bring deliveries to your store?
I'll have to double-check with our client, but I believe it's more or less a 30-foot sized vehicle.
So, you'll have no tractor-trailer deliveries to the site?
I can't testify to that yet. I don't, I'll double-check. But it's not usually the intent to have a tractor-trailer deliver, make the deliveries to the convenience-
So, to the chairman's point, though, if a tractor-trailer were to deliver and utilize the loading space, they would have to back out?
Yes, it would. Okay, continuing, what is still proposed for the, for the location? I mentioned the canopy and the six pump islands underneath the canopy. And the northernmost portion of the site is where we have indicated the convenience store. The convenience store will be a one-story building. It will be 3,000 square feet. On the easterly side of that convenience store is where we've indicated a 10-foot by 60-foot loading zone, and at the end of the loading zone is where the traction closer is proposed. There's also the driveway on Wyckoff Mills Road. That driveway has a one-way in, a right turn-in, and then leaving the site, it's, it's a left turn only out to head north on Wyckoff Mills Road.
I'm sorry, I don't mean to cut you off. I just wanna go back to, because it's to the chairman's point. So, a garbage truck is gonna have to front-load into the refuse area and then back up and potentially conflict with your entry from Wyckoff Mills Road?
That could potentially happen, yes, it could.
And these turning movements, you use the auto-turn program?
Yes, we do. With respect to parking, we have 17 parking spaces on-site and one handicap spot, as indicated by the graphics. We are including-
No, I, I was, currently, right now, the traffic on the northbound exit ramp from Route 9, is that one-way or is that two-way?
It's, it's one-way up to the gas station.
It's one-way up to the gas station?
It's one-way up to the gas station, and it turns into-
Yeah, it splits one-way up and one-way down.
Yeah, double direction.
Until you get to here.
So, if somebody inadvertently came southbound past Strickland, they would have to go through the gas station if they wanted to get back up to northbound?
Yeah, because years ago, there used to be a roundabout right there.
Yeah.
And they took that out, when they redesigned the off-ramp to Wyckoff.
Yeah, to make it-
So, somebody passes Strickland, their only option would be, right, either to turn around right there in the street or go through the gas station.
That's what I thought, yeah. Okay, I'm sorry.
Okay, I started to mention that by the graphics, we, you know, we have a, a landscape plan, which is perimeter landscape essentially along the property lines. The larger circles are shade trees, the smaller circles are either deciduous or evergreen shrubs. The green dotted areas are grass. We do have a parking area in the rear, or, excuse me, in the southerly portion, and there is parking, 90-degree parking, which is perpendicular to the store. So, the intent is, this is the, this is the typical layout for any type of gas station and convenience store. You like to keep the same orientation in this specific location. It's a divided highway, so the vehicles traveling north on Route 9 would make a right turn into the site. If they didn't even want gas, they would just pull up straight ahead and park in front of the convenience store. Other times, they do stop underneath the canopy, they'll get gas, and a patron may walk inside to do a transaction while their car is being fueled. Again, it's, it's a common type of business with respect to convenience stores and gas stations. We do have, with respect to stormwater runoff, we have an infiltration basin on the site, which is going to serve the roof runoff from the convenience store and the canopy, so that water would be piped via downspouts all underground into the infiltration basin. It's all clean water. And then the rest of the site is being captured by inlets within the site, which tie into a stormwater drainage system, which is in Wyckoff Mills Rose, and I believe it, it does travel in the southerly direction. Utilities on-site, there's, there's utility services for water, sanitary, electric, and gas. Those will be provided by the utility companies and as necessary by the municipal requirements.
Could you please provide some testimony on how you're clarifying the water, the stormwater that you're collecting?
Howard, excuse me?
Clarifying it.
Clarifying?
Yeah, cleaning it up. Getting, because ultimately, there will be spilled fuel and so forth that will eventually be washed into those, those basins, so- And Ms. Newman asks, will there be filters or additional measures at the inlets to prevent fuel oil spills from entering the stormwater management system? That's the same question? Yeah, yeah. So, is there anything proposed, and if not, can there be?
No, there isn't anything proposed. The reason being because, you know, during dispersing of the fuel into the underground storage tanks, each fill has what they call a spill bucket. There's alarms. It's really, it would be a major catastrophe or occurrence for fuel to reach into the stormwater drainage system. Underneath the canopy, it's all concrete. If there's any type of small spill, say, it tend to take, say, a nozzle out while it's still fueling. It's on concrete, and it's all cleaned up. They have the, the products there to address those items. But it would never be significant enough where any type of spill would go into the stormwater drainage system unless it's a major catastrophe.
Well, to Mr. Tenonhouse's point, how do you address water quality?
I don't believe we, we have to address water quality on the site.
Because?
Because we don't exceed the increase in impervious coverage.
So, you're not qual, so, I mean, to help, you're not a major development?
Excuse me?
You're not classified as a major development for stormwater purposes?
That's correct.
So, you're never gonna sand or salt during inclement weather?
No, that may still be deemed necessary.
Well, how, we're gonna just let that, all that runoff into the stormwater system?
I believe it's no different than anything else that's done on, on any state highway or any, any other development parcel.
Most of the other applications that come in front of this board go into a detention basin or a retention basin, and they have some type of stormwater treatment, storm septic or something like that, that gives us the ability to meet water quality standards.
Well, again, I don't believe we're required to have it, but again, and we'll, we'll talk to the applicant and the, and the client and discuss it, and we, we have heard the board's concerns, and we'll, we'll make a determination of how we can address it.
I, I mean, I'd be, I'd be very much concerned, because I believe that a lot of the stormwater is going to end up into a, a very important C1 waterway that's, I believe, across, across the road, if my memory serves me right. And, and it would, it's very important to the area's drinking water. I think it's a, because we had another applicant, application on a plot of land pretty much across the street from the site, and during that testimony, we had learned that behind that property was a very important waterway that serves into the reservoir. All right, we, we will discuss that with the applicant.
Well, what is the difference if you're, if you're salting Route 9?
I don't know, we're about the salting, I worry about the, the fuel, minor fuel spills and so forth going in. We had, we, like, for example, when we had the quick-check application came in, they, they made the commitment to provide the additional filtration-
If I could, though, Mr. Tenonhouse, and I, I know what you're getting at, and I don't mean to cut you off, it was also a major development, so you're comparing that to a major development. The state stormwater management regulations are different-
Okay.
-for that. Certainly, you can ask for the information, and they should look towards it. They've heard that there's concerns about where the water discharges, but because of the acreage of disturbance and the amount of impervious coverage, they don't meet the prong, which would require it, as happened with the development across the street and quick-check.
Understood, but I don't believe that in any way, shape, or form, that prohibits me from-
It does not.
... presenting my concern and the reasons why I'm concerned.
It does not. I, I have a question. Do you have adequate separation between the bottom of your infiltration area and the groundwater?
Oh, I have to, I'd have to double-check. I believe I heard that the groundwater-
Was six feet deep?
Yeah, I didn't know if it was six or seven, so we, I have to check to see what the actual depth is.
Okay, I have substantial concerns and wanna ensure that that, there's adequate separation, at least two feet, between the bottom. And also, you heard the concerns about excavating to put in the system and what de-watering may be required, but this is designed to be an infiltration system as well. So, if you have contaminated water and there's monitoring water, I just wanna make sure that we have it adequately addressed.
I, I'm not sure. We'll, we'll address what your concerns are.
What about the site lighting?
We have, with respect to site lighting, we've indicated three area lights, and there's canopy lights below the canopy. The area lights are, there's two located at the rear parking area, and there's one located on the easterly side, at the easterly side of the loading zone to light that portion of the site. So, the intent is to safely light the site for the safe movement off of Route 9, back onto Route 9, and also access onto Wyckoff Mills Road.
Ms. Newman, in her report, points out that there's spillage evident at the rightways.
There is, there is spillage off-site. We don't believe it's significant. There's always intent to have a significant site lighting at the driveways for safe movements, and there is spillage, but it doesn't, you know, we don't believe it, it impacts or goes anywhere off-site onto adjacent parcels. It does go into the rightways, but it does not go into adjacent properties.
So, I would defer to the board on that. We've had instances where we prefer to see it more lit, but we've also had instances where we've required shields to be installed to not allow for the spillage of light.
Mr. Chairman, would you like me to handle this one?
Yeah, sure.
Okay. So, if you would, could you, Ms. Newman, put up C-2.3? So, the, yeah, we went too far. The next, the one up.
You want the lining, Brian?
I gotta start with this one, unfortunately. Could you please describe to me what this plan is showing, C-2.3, and what the five-one-foot candle and .5-foot candle lines are, are representing?
That's exactly what they're representing, as you, I'm sorry, as you mentioned. The, the A-line is the 5.0-foot candle line, so you can see it approximately just encircles the canopy. So, in other words, if you went there for a light meter with a light meter and stood approximately 10 feet from the canopy, at ground level, approximately 3 feet high, your light meter would say it's 5.0-foot candles. So, as you move away from that lighted source of the canopy, the next number we have is B, which is the 1.0-foot candle line. So, again, in those areas, approximately, if you went with a light meter 3 feet off the ground, it'd be 1.0-foot candles, and C is .5-foot candles. So, that's essentially showing where the light intensities are on the site, and they do, they do leave the site in certain, in certain locations, and that would be the approximate values of the foot candle intensities at those lines.
I, I have to apologize. When I first read it, I had the arrows messed up, and I thought the, the five-foot candles was the one on the outer, which was why I started there, because it was in conflict with your next sheet, which shows the lower foot candles. I apologize, I had, I had read it wrong. If we could please go to the next slide.
Is this proposed to be a 24-hour gas station?
I, I believe the convenience store is proposed to be 24 hours.
Yes.
It is.
I, I would recommend that, I, I would recommend that when you come back for, because we know we're not finishing tonight, that you bring some testimony in regards to what is the IES recommendations for an ingress and an egress area. I think I agree with Ms. Newman that the foot candles in those areas may be a little bit on the light side. And also, I don't think DOT is gonna object to a little bit of extra light onto the highway.
So, you're, you're asking us to, I'm not, you're asking us to check with the, with IES, what Illumi, Engineering Society of Illumination, for what the values are for a gas station?
Yeah, what the recommendations are for the gas station, the ingress and egress, and verify those recommendations with those foot candles, and if need be, increase the, the intensity on the ingress and the egress areas.
Okay.
At least-
I'm, I'm sorry, Brian. When we had the quick-check application, remember we had this whole conversation about that underneath the canopy, it was a very high level of illumination, and, and you're coming in with five-foot candles, which, yes, it's, it's greater than what the average is on the street, but I, I remember we were talking about, like, 20 or 25-foot candles-
Under the canopy, and, and they have that, they only have around 20. They're showing only 20.
And with that canopy being only that short distance from the right-of-way line, you're telling me that you only have that minimal sp- telling me that you only have that minimal spillage?
I'm going to, to, to hold back the majority of my comments until I hear better testimony in regards to what the IES recommendations are.
Okay. When, when you do come back, it would be nice if you didn't use the right-of-way line as a cutoff, and that we actually got to see the, the point illumination for a distance out.
Yeah, we could provide that. We actually did too. We did the, this is the point by point, this drawing that's being pulled up now, this is the point by point within the site. The other one was the, this one is actually more, this is more detailed, this is more accurate, but we can bring it out till it's 0.00, so you could see it within the entire perimeter for most of site lighting. That's no problem.
That's fine.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Are you planting bollards on the parking spaces facing Route 9, Wyckoff Road, and the parking spaces facing the convenience store?
There's bollards, there's bollards facing the convenience store, but there's no bollards at the parking spaces in the southerly portion of the site.
So, I would want to see bollards facing Route 9 and facing Wyckoff Road, those parking spaces.
I would agree.
We can put them there if deemed necessary.
It's an ordinance requirement, at least at the convenience store.
At the convenience store, yes, and they do have them provided at the convenience store. The one thing I would ask the board is if in lieu of bollards, sometimes when we've looked at it and we've asked for it where the parking abuts the street, we've looked at maybe like a post and rail fence, but the fence posts being steel.
Yeah.
It just tends to be more aesthetic.
Now, where the roadway is, it seems that a car can go under the canopy, is that? Are there bollards around the pumps there?
Yes, we have bollards at each, each end of the pump islands, but not the individual islands. We don't have them in between, there's, there's an island in between, but we don't have a specific one there, but they're at the, they're at the southerly ends, and they're at the northerly ends of these bollards.
Okay, and secondly, this, this is adjacent to a senior citizen development, so apparently you're going to have use from the, from that community. So, one handicap space is not enough, especially when you have such an aged group opposite, right opposite you. I think you need three handicap spots for this project because of the clientele, part of it, clientele you're going to have.
Again, as far as I know, we're not provided, not required by any ADA code to do that, but again, we'll, we've heard a lot of comments tonight, and we can take it back and discuss it with our client, since we are going to be coming back here and see if we can, we can bring in another handicap parking space or two.
Two handicaps, three, three would be perfect.
Again, but, you know, we'll see if we can, we can accommodate that.
I would like to just discuss the applicability of the parking at the south end, all right? The gas stations, you have one attendant booth, all right, which is at the most two employees, and one employee in the convenience store, which means you have on-site three employees. You have one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, seven spots at the south end? Aside from the concern about them being blocked part of the time, why do we need all those spaces there, and do we have enough spaces in front of the store or adjacent to the store? Clearly, you're not anticipating anyone parking in the south end and walking to the C store, are you?
No, that may happen occasionally, but no, it's not, it, we don't perceive that that would be deemed necessary. Your parking requirement is based on, you know, the square footage of the, of the convenience store. We're required to have 20, and we show 17. But the one thing about this type of instance is kind of unique, is that a lot of times, as I mentioned, and I'm sure some of the board members or public may do this themselves, when you go to fuel at the, underneath the canopy, sometimes you will leave your car there, you'll tell the attendant, fill it up, I'm going in to get a newspaper or a buttered roll, and, you know, that, that kind of acts as your space. You don't have to, you don't have to move your car once you get fuel and then pull up and do a second, do a second, more or less a second transaction. You try to combine it with just stopping once underneath the canopy.
So, why do we have an ordinance that requires 20 for the C store?
Well, I believe that's your, that's your requirement.
That's our requirement, yes, all right. So, I'm saying to you, if the, if the ordinance requires 20 spaces because of the C store, why aren't we having at least close to 20 spaces by the C store?
For one of the reasons I just mentioned to you, a lot of times the transaction is, this is, this is typical of any type of gas station and convenience store. The activity in the parking space is actually where you fuel for your, your gas, and it's done at the same time. It's highly unlikely that somebody would get gas, when they finish getting gas, then they pull up in front of the convenience store and get out again and, and do whatever transaction they want to do in the convenience store. So, that's why, and again, it's the motor in public, this is the standard, all the oil companies, this is, this is more or less, that's what's required. They feel that this is all that's necessary, and it's very highly unlikely all those spaces will be used at the same time.
Yeah. Is this a variance requirement? It is.
It's a design waiver, just a design waiver.
Design waiver, technically, yeah. And I just wanted to ask real quick, did you look at any alternative designs to get all the parking spaces closer to the building in terms of the building layout footprint and in relation to the parking spaces?
Excuse me?
Did, the, the parking spaces versus the building footprint, did you look at any alternative designs, different ways to get the parking spaces all, all near the building? The reason I'm asking is, is like Wawa or Quick Check, they don't have the parking spaces exactly opposite on the other side of the, the fuel dispensers?
Well, again, we'll have testimony on that from our planner also, but it's, it's due, you know, partially due to the actual shape of this, this, this property and the access to this property.
Well, but the question was, when you were designing it, did you, did you consider any kind of alternative plan that would have yielded the required number of parking spaces?
I'm sure we did, and this is what we felt was, is the best-case scenario for the development at hand.
I mean, I mean, that doesn't sound like, you know, it's, you're sure we did. You don't know.
Well, I can't remember, no, I can't.
Okay, that's fine.
Chairman?
This project has been around, I think, six or seven years. I'm not sure.
So, if those six spaces without the handicap were taken, and somebody wasn't getting gas but wanted lottery tickets or a soda, and they were parking in the southern side of the property, that's some significant safety concerns with walking across that parking lot to get to the convenience store with cars coming off of Route 9 into that facility.
Does it sound like we need an alternate plan that shows a compliant application?
I am certainly, I've expressed my concern about it.
Well, and just, Mr. Chairman, the board can certainly express their concern. I don't think you can require them to do that. They can take your comments and do with it what they will, but they propose to you what they, what they want to. But certainly, I think you have been heard loud and clear, not only on that issue, but, you know, on several others tonight, that they did say they were going to go back and take a look at to see whether they could redesign or accommodate.
Have you made application to the DOT for the ingress egress?
No.
Is, I, obviously, the ingress and egress off of Route 9 is under the DOT jurisdiction. Does DOT retain jurisdiction over the section of Wyckoff Mills Road?
That's a good question. Sorry, I thought it was our client talking. I'm not, that's a good question, we'd have to double check on that, because I believe they have jurisdiction on the exit, but I don't know where their jurisdiction ends.
Our, our traffic expert, he's not here tonight, but they, he knows the answer to that. I don't know. I think they, I think it is NJ DOT jurisdiction, I'm pretty sure.
Who is your traffic expert?
McDonough Ray.
John McDonough?
Yeah, or Scott, I'm not sure which one.
Is this proposed to be a BP again?
It's, yes, it is.
Okay. Is there any similar designs that, that BP has that's, that's similar to this, or this is very unique to their, because of the way that the land is configured?
I would have to check with our client and BP on that. I mean, I would, in this type of configuration and, and site, site shape of the property, location, things like that, I would think anything would be somewhat similar, because this is, this is, again, more or less, all the major oil companies would have this type of particular layout or something very similar. It's just the way the traffic movement flows in and out of the site.
And to be fair, Mr. Kudrick, just so your, our chief Kudrick, I apologize, I think that that's going to go to their planning testimony.
Right.
Because, just because they want to build a gas station there. I mean, the board needs to look at the variances that are associated with this application, the associated layout, to make sure that just what your question was makes sense.
Okay.
Do you have a generator proposed?
We don't have one at this time, but we acknowledge that was in your, your review letter.
Okay, and isn't there a change in state statute that you have to have a generator or a hookup?
I'm not sure if there one, if there is.
You have to, you have to at least have a hookup where they bring a generator on.
Okay, so you're going to at least have that provided?
Yes, and we're, and the, when we bring up the applicant with the operational testimony, you'll deal with that.
Probably also have a plan that indicates where that portable gen set would be located during those times of need.
I'm sorry.
If, if that is a state requirement and the applicant is proposing a generator hookup, they should also provide an area on the site plan where they're proposing to place that gen set during those times of need.
Yeah, that's correct, and I, I thought I heard that they were planning to address that through their operational, but yes, we have to know where the hookup is, because that's where the generator would be.
And, can we go back to bollards for a second?
Sure.
Didn't see anything on the application packet where there'd be bollards around that proposed diesel pump. Did I miss it? Is it?
Well, I, I can't, I'm sorry, I gotta, I can't see that plan. There's no reason for, there's no reason for bollards at the diesel pump because it's behind the curved island.
Would be my recommendation to put deep bollards there so that no one jumps the curb.
We can do that also, if deemed necessary.
Let me ask you a question. Every application that we've had before from Quick Check to Wawa, they, they don't allow tractor trailers in for diesel, which is, to me, a major problem with all this traffic on Route 9 and Wyckoff Road, and you're telling me this company is going to fuel diesel trailers, so you're going to have tractor trailers coming out of their way to this location to fuel up?
We're told the.
That's a major concern.
The applicant would not, they're not going to allow fueling of tractor trailers, but he'll testify to that when, when, if and when he gets up, not, probably not tonight, but next meeting.
Can I go back to lighting for a second?
Sure, whatever you like.
As part of the redo of the lighting calcs, if you could also include the canopy, it's not the canopy, it's your soffit lighting. I don't see that your soffit lighting has been included in the calculations in the front of the building.
Again.
Underneath that soffit lighting, it doesn't show any foot candle readings.
No, we only show it in the pavement areas, so we can include that also.
I had one follow-up question, and then I'm finished with questions, and you can finish. We didn't discuss signage. What's proposed for signage?
Yes, you're right. We have a number of signs proposed for the site.
Do you, do you want me to give them all the areas and things like that, because I like the rest of the plan?
Well, just show where they are for now.
We have a freestanding sign, it's located on the southerly portion of the site, it'd be located on the southerly island. That freestanding sign, I believe, I rather reference the plan. I believe it's, it's 26.2 feet high, and it contains 129.4 square feet, and that freestanding sign will include the identification sign of the BP, it would have a notification or signage for the shop, and then the price signs for the gas being served at the site. Then, on the canopy, there are actually four logos, so there's one, there's a center circular logo on each side of the canopy, each one of those logos is seven square feet, and then on the building, we have four signs, I believe. There's, let me just double check.
Take two.
Well, there's two message boards on the front, and there's two signs, one on the front of, there's two signs on the, on the building, one on the front facing the canopy, and one on the right side which faces Route 9, excuse me, the left side which faces Route 9.
Ms. Newman, could you, could you help us as, as board members understand whether this signage package meets our ordinance's requirements? I saw in your report, it didn't seem like it did.
It does not.
It does not.
So, first and foremost, businesses on a corner can have two types of sign, a freestanding or a jackmanning wall facade, but two signs. So, they're proposing a total of nine size, nine signs, as was indicated, one's freestanding. The freestanding sign also exceeds the area that we allow in the zone, but I would tell you that, for the most part, with a gas station, this, that, that area is kind of typical because they have to display the fuel pricing. But having said that, from there, you then have eight building-mounted or canopy signage, and I think what the applicant's going to have to demonstrate is why we need eight to identify the site. I mean, as you're coming down Route 9 north, because you can't access from south, you're going to be able to see the freestanding sign as you approach. Arguably, I think you can also see it as you're coming down Wyckoff Mills Road, but why we need signs along the canopy and two additional signs along the building, I think, is something that they'd have to provide additional testimony on.
Is it also fair to say that they also have to provide testimony while they're putting in a sign that, the, the sign that does have the fuel pricing is much larger than our ordinance requires, and it seems to be much larger than any other sign we have on any other fuel station we have in town?
Uh, yeah, yes, they'd have to. It also is too close to the right-of-way line, so yes.
Okay.
So, can I make a recommendation at this point, since there's a lot of questions? Why don't we go to Ms. Newman's September 14th letter? All right. South area, if you would, have your engineer start.
Yeah.
Where we talked about the, the variances and then.
Well, you want him, our planner will ultimately get to the variances, but if you want him to describe them as well, he can.
Well, but other than just identifying the variances, this witness is not going to provide testimony on positive and negative criteria.
That's correct.
So, I don't, I don't know how useful that is at this juncture.
Okay, but there are other issues.
Right, so, if we get to Ms. Newman's report on page five, item number four is usually, those are usually the points that we need to comment on, unless you have something before that, Mr. Chairman, because those other items are either waivers or variances which, the architect's going to discuss some of those features, but then the planner will put the proofs on to support the relief.
And also, he'll address Mr. Vanoy's.
Yes, yes, but I'm getting to Ms., again, Ms. Newman's report, page five, item number four. Four A is operational, we'll get to that when the operator testifies. Four B was the stormwater management, which was discussed, and we're going to get back to you on the filtration or some other way of addressing the concerns raised by the board. Four C was testified to by the LSRP already. Four D, you touched on the site circulation, but you wanted more information, so we'll get to the, we're going to get you more information on circulation. We did not discuss four E, which is the need for any island curve or barrier between the loading area and adjacent parking spaces. We did talk about bollards, so I, I'm not sure if that addressed Ms. Newman's comment, but we're going to look at the bollards again. Four F is another operational testimony, which we'll get back to you with in a little more detail with the diesels. We discussed the backup generator and. We discussed the backup generator, and we'll get back to you with answers on that. We discussed the light levels on H, and you need more information for that. The, four I is a, is just a comment about in ordinance section, which I guess we could discuss with the planner, but we think we, we clearly, we believe we meet your ordinance standards for the conditional use, at least.
I think what the issue with that was, is that your plan flagged that you have an existing condition, nonconformity, because you correlate out Section 188-87, which is specific to a service, service station, and it doesn't, I think that was superseded. I think you're, you're gasoline and convenience center use, which is governed under 188-98.4.
That's correct, and that just has three standards.
That is correct.
The architects can discuss J, and then K will get through with all the witnesses, will primarily operational. And then, number five, and this is for our engineer.
So you want me, you want me?
Five A, Ms. Newman asked for more information to make sure there's separation, which you said you'd get back to her on. And then, as far as...
Ms. Alfieri, can I just, is this, do we have any title action because of the, the river?
No, we do not.
Okay.
And then, five B, can, can we address that comment?
That's just a shift of tree, we can do that.
So we would agree to comply with five B. And then, six is just the outside agency approvals, which we obviously need to get.
Right.
And then, Peter's report or the planner's report, I think, would all be planning testimony unless there was some technical comment. Yeah, I think it would all be addressed either through the architect and, and/or through our planner.
I agree.
And I don't have any other questions of the engineer, of Mr. Chair, and the board or the public may.
Could you just, just ask me, show me one more time, the underground infiltration system? Where is it located?
Where it's located, it's shown on, I don't know if you want to... If you look on the drawing that's mounted on the, on the screens.
It's in the southwest.
It's located on the, well, that's a detailed, it's located underneath the parking area, just, just south of where the freestanding sign is. So it's, it's between the tank location and the right-of-way line for Route 9.
Is that a detention system? Filtration.
It's an underground detention system.
How's that going to work if?
Because what happens is to what comes into it, all right? It's a half-circle chamber, and then it just percolates down into the ground below it.
How, how deep is that structure?
Well, I think, if you have questions about that, it should go to their engineer.
No, 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 I'm asking in general, yeah. I am, I'm not asking the chairman. I'm, I'm asking, how, how deep is, how deep is that typically? And the reason I'm asking, the question is, is we heard testimony that the water table is somewhere around six feet.
If I, I don't want to cut you off, but I asked them already to provide that information, to provide the subsequent soils information to assure we at least have a two-foot separation.
It's getting late.
And then, I also heard you ask, but there is an outflow to the system, so it's not entirely relying upon infiltration, ultimately does discharge.
So that's what you meant by, okay.
Yeah.
Is it also fair to say that if that's the case, and we're, we're forcing more water down into that, to that aquifer that lives underneath this site, does that mean that then there's the possibility that that aquifer may grow, and any contamination that's presently supposed to just be decaying could then migrate off the site? Because at some point, that aquifer underground will end up getting filled up, and it's got to go somewhere.
Yeah, I think that's information that they'll have to provide back to us as to whether or not there's any implications between the recharge water entering into the groundwater. That's where the separation and stuff is going to come into play more.
So are we at a point where, you know, the, the client needs to kind of bring in their LSRP and give us some, some testimony? I'm assuming that this is not the engineer that would, would provide that testimony regards to how to keep the contamination on site with all this other stuff happening?
Well, they have to have at least a two-foot separation between groundwater and the surface water.
Okay.
So, you know, I don't think there's any reason to believe that you're going to have this substantial impact, but I think the engineer knows what he has to respond back to, and if it implies that there's going to be impact to the groundwater, then we'd have to hear back from the LSRP.
Got it.
This map, and forgive me, because I don't know how many monitoring wells are on this site, and it definitely does not go into an LSRP question, it's more of an engineering question. We're all aware that there's going to be some monitoring going on into the future. Now, I see a lot of little MWs on this map, which typically represent monitoring wells, which are being sampled quarterly according to the LSRP that testified prior. When you, if you so develop this site, those monitoring wells are going to be destroyed, and they will have to be reinstalled as a requirement to be monitored into the future. Now, according to this map, it looks like a lot of the monitoring wells are in very close proximity to the pump islands. And if anything were to happen, it doesn't take much to contaminate groundwater. A drip off of a, of a nozzle gets into that monitoring well, you now have a whole new can of worms to deal with. So you're, you have monitoring wells that are, in essence, being used to monitor for the existing case, but they're being installed right next to pumps for a proposed gas station. Do you have, as, as the engineer, has there any, has there been any discussion about the, the monitoring wells and what's going to happen to them and being reinstalled?
Well, that I'll, I'll, we'll have discussions with the LSRP on exactly what's required, because I don't have that information. But with respect to, if you're concerned about leaks and things like that, all these tanks, there's all types of monitoring.
I'm not, I'm not concerned about the tanks, I'm more concerned about what happens above ground.
Well, what I'm mentioning, that's what I mean, that's partially, you know, the older piping system, everything's double-walled, there's all kinds of notifications if there's any, you know, if you have a physical spill, somebody's filling up a five-gallon container for their lawnmower, the guy dropped it and it spills onto the, you know, but that's why, you know, if, that's why at the fueling facilities, it's concrete, because it doesn't, it doesn't seep into concrete asphalt, it could into, you know, things like that, so that's.
But it could also seep right into a monitoring well that you're sampling the water.
No doubt a bad backup possibly happens. So all these things we'll have to look at and take into account of what, what's necessary to be done to be safe environmentally.
Can I ask, what would normally be, what would you think a safe distance for?
I, I can't make that call, but I, you don't monitor monitoring wells next to a gas station pump if you're trying to close a site with monitored natural attenuation.
And that's for the benefit of, of, of the client, what you're saying?
Uh, it's...
Is that just potentially?
Correct.
Yeah, it is.
Absolutely.
Would have any more questions right now?
I'm, I'm getting kind of tired.
Yeah, well, I, all right, what, what I would like to do is, I would like to open it up to questions, yeah, I'll get, I'll get to you in a second, all right? I'd like to open it up to questions to the, the engineer, so that they have the input from the questions, and then we'll call it a night. Okay? Is that okay with you, Ms. Alfieri?
Yes.
All right. Please, questions for the engineer?
Yeah. You mentioned that...
Hold on, hold on.
Mr. Dixiel.
I'm sorry.
You just state and spell your name and give us your address.
Jerry Dixiel, 62A Piazza Victoria.
Okay, go ahead.
You mentioned that he would be getting a delivery from the north side. How is he exiting off the gas station?
Delivery, gas leasing, the, the, there, there's two routes he can take, and that's what's shown on our plan. The fuel delivery truck will be going in the northerly direction along Route 9. He would make a right-hand turn into the site. He would straddle the underground storage tank and disperse the fuel. Our plan indicates that he could, he would make a right onto Wyckoff Mills Road, and then a left in the northerly direction until he meets the intersection.
Okay, let me ask you something. I drive a 50-foot tractor trailer. For me to make that turn on Strickland, it's impossible, because you've got traffic coming, going onto Wyckoff, making a, making a left.
We don't believe there's any, any restriction that that's an impossible turn. We believe that it, it can be made to get back to Route 9.
When would he be getting his deliveries?
Excuse me?
When would he be getting his deliveries?
I'm not sure on what the exact times of, of delivery would be, but I believe he can schedule them when, when...
Well, I think you have an operations person, right?
Yes.
And that's, I think that's who's going to have the answers to those questions.
Because it's very hard to make that left turn onto Strickland if you're coming from Wyckoff.
Mr. Dixiel, they have a traffic engineer who I think is going to, that's, that's their bailiwick. And they also have the operations person who's going to be able to answer all the other questions about, you know, specific times and things like that.
Thank you.
Okay, Mrs. Dixiel.
Barbara Dixiel, 62A Piazza Victoria, from Wilshire.
Questions?
Yes.
Okay.
What is this now?
Question about making...
No, no, what is this?
This is after the ride to, about coming or at gas station.
This is something new that we have not... Okay. Mr. Alfieri, you want to come over?
If it's a traffic question, can we save it for the traffic engineer? If it's a...
No, he addressed it, I want to ask him. He addressed this tonight, and I would like to ask him. Yeah, Mr. Alfieri?
Well, hold on. Okay, so, Mr. Alfieri, you want to take a look at that?
Stay there, stay there.
So what, what is this, Mrs. Dixiel? This is a...
Yes, I, I, when, when you're saying...
No, 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 what, I, we need to identify what you've just given us.
Okay.
So it's one, two, three pages with one, two, three, four, five, actually, it's four pages.
It's coming off...
Six, seven colored photographs with extensive comments from Mrs. Dixiel. When were these photographs taken, Mrs. Dixiel?
I don't know the date.
Was it in 2018?
Yeah, it was, yeah.
Okay, it's taken...
It wasn't too long ago.
2018. Mr. Alfieri?
I have no objection.
Okay, this is...
E9.
E9. Okay, and she has a bunch for the board. Okay, go ahead, Mrs. Dixiel.
While you're giving that out, let me ask, are, are you a non, are you an, an undersized, non-conforming lot, that when you're supposed to have 80,000 square feet and you don't have it?
Yes.
Can I ask you how you're going to fit all this stuff in, in an undersized, non-conforming lot with all these tanks?
Well, I think the answer to that question is, they believe their plan shows how they're going to fit it in.
Um, all right, so, these pictures, gentlemen, are, I took, I have, I have a copy of their circulation plan, unfortunately, I didn't bring it. It's coming in on 9 North to the gas station from the trailers, coming out on Wyckoff. Please be aware...
Well, is there, is there a question, though?
Yes, are you aware that coming on on Wyckoff Road is a state highway to the corner of Strickland? When you attempt...
Well, hold on, you've, you've asked that question, let's get the answer.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear the question.
When you're coming off, when you're coming in on Route 9 with your trailer, and you're coming off the gas station onto Wyckoff Mills Road, are you aware, are you aware that, that Wyckoff Mills Road from Route 9 to Strickland is a state highway? They made it a state highway.
That question was asked, and we, he said he wasn't sure. I think, I think it is, but we were...
I know it is.
Well, Mrs. Dixiel, Mrs. Dixiel, you have to allow them to answer.
So that question was asked, and he did not know.
Okay.
But that's something that...
The traffic engineer.
Right.
They made it a state highway, Mr. Caccaro. In my house, when somebody almost got killed, and the state...
You're just trying again?
Well, but that's, that's testimony.
Okay, anyway, okay, so, when you attempt to make this left turn onto Strickland Road, it's impossible with the traffic coming from County Road 524 to Strickland, and there's traffic on Strickland both ways. You also have to be aware, are you aware that there are two four-ton weight limit signs? One on that corner of the villages, and one at the county, county, county road 524. So none of your trucks can go one inch past Wyckoff Mills Road and Strickland Road. They must make the left turn onto Strickland.
Is that, do you agree with that statement?
I'm sorry, I didn't understand it, and I don't know.
There appear to be weight limit signs.
Yeah, I'm not familiar with the signs, so...
Okay.
I can't...
Mr. Caccaro, I think this is something the traffic engineer should handle.
Yes.
All right, so as far as lighting goes, can you keep your candles low, knowing that there's 1,000 senior citizens living 45 feet away from you?
We believe our lighting plan shows the site to be safe for pedestrian and vehicular movements, and that's the way we designed it.
Well, can you think in your heart to have a little bit more respect for the, for the elderly citizens, including me, I'm, I'm almost 80 years old.
Could, could you, could, in order to, I'd, I'd make a recommendation, in order to satisfy Mrs. Dixiel's question, when you come back with your revised calculations, can you also add a quick glare study to the property across?
Well, I think our plan will show that, because you're asking us, you, you specifically asked us to show the point-by-point numbers till it becomes zero. So that will, that will prove how far they extend.
And then just put a, put a point, you know, on the other side of the road, onto the villages' property area, and just do a quick glare study?
I'm not sure what you're asking me now.
Well, you're, you're, you're going to, you're going to provide just a quick glare study, assuming, in the glare study, you would, you would indicate whether there's an ability for them to directly see any of the, the light coming out of the fixture.
Well, they're going to be able to see the light, but...
I don't believe they will with the fact that you're using cutoff fixtures, light cutoff type fixtures, but if you could provide some testimony in regards to that, I think that would help, Miss Dixiel. It's my recommendation.
Sir, okay, I, I, what, are you aware, are you aware of the parking ride on the corner of, just past Exxon Station, the parking ride on Wyckoff Mills Road or Route 9 and Wyckoff Mills Road? Are you aware of that 450-car parking ride?
No, I'm not aware of it.
Okay, well, are you aware that, oh, go over there and take a look at the candles and the lights, they face down? Is it possible that you can face the lights down just so that 1,000 senior citizens don't get impacted? Is it possible?
Well, our lighting plan does show that, I believe, but we'll double-check it to make sure.
Also, with all of your signs, can, can you limit the amount of signs you have?
We will discuss that with the applicant.
And also, can, can you give very careful consideration to Manasquan River, the Bannon Meadow Brook, and the fact that the Manasquan River flows under Route 9, north and south? And this is our drinking water. So you have to understand, can you please give some careful respect and careful consideration to the contamination of that river? Because it flows through Howell. Now, also, are you aware that the villages and Route 9 from 195 south, are you aware that we are in the Manasquan River watershed? And are you aware also, from 195 south, this is north, south, we're in the Manas, we're in the Matina Creek River watershed? So Howell and the villages has a very unique position in New Jersey. We are in two watersheds at the same time, and the long brook is on the other side of the villages. It's all drinking water, you've got to understand this. Please, I beg you.
All right, we're, we're going into testimony again.
Okay, I just, thank you very much.
Well, you didn't...
A deep, deep concern, sir, of the quality of our drinking water.
You're going to have an opportunity.
Thank you very much, but just, please, give careful consideration.
Enough, okay?
You'll have the opportunity.
Thank you very much, good night.
Thank you, Mrs. Dixiel.
Is there anyone else in the audience who would like to ask questions of the engineer?
Thank you.
Seeing none, we'll close the public portion.
Mr. Alfieri, how much time? Mr. Alfieri, how much time do you think your side is going to need to address the various issues that were raised tonight?
When's the next open meeting with time on it? Because there's nothing here that I think is going to take more than...
Well, we looked at it, the, the best night, you know, considering things that are already scheduled, I think, what did we say, the 24th?
February 21st.
February 21st. That's the most realistic night in terms of other applications that have already been scheduled for you guys to have the most time possible.
That's, that's fine. That works for us. I don't know what our traffic experts' availability is or planners', but certainly the persons that are present tonight are available that night.
Well, we'll be starting with the same people, you know, at the next meeting, so...
There's two others on there, though.
Yeah, that's fine. There'll be...
And I'll need an extension of time, please.
Letter or, I, I'll give it to you on the record, but you want a separate letter?
Just on the record, so...
Yeah, we'll give you an extension through the end of March in case it snows in February.
Thank you.
Okay. So case number SP 1006 of Gil Petroleum be carried to the board's February 21st, 2019 meeting, beginning 7 o'clock here in the main meeting room in Town Hall. This is important. There will not be further notice to property owners. So if you received a notice in the mail, you will not receive another one. This is your notice that this application is being carried to February 21st, 2019. Also, just for anyone who is interested, the file is with Eileen in her office and can be inspected during normal business hours. You can also come in and make copies if you please.
And we will be submitting at least the environmental reports that we discuss well in advance of that meeting.
All right, gentlemen.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any, any reason to go into executive?
No, Mr. Chairman.
Can I have a motion to adjourn?
Before we adjourn, Mr. Chairman, just want to remind everybody, we're supposed to be having a master plan committee meeting next Thursday.
Thank you.
But I don't have any direction from...
Yes.
The board. So, Eileen, Mr. Cucero, could I get some advice on, should we meet for the master plan committee meeting next Thursday? Or should we, we cancel it until we get direction from the board, from the coun, I'm sorry, from the council in order to, what their, what their objections, objectives would be?
You know, our Class 3 is not here tonight. I think, let's wait for our Class 3 member, Councilwoman O, or Deputy, Deputy Mayor.
Deputy Mayor.
Deputy Mayor O'Donnell to come.
Okay.
And she can probably give you some insight as to budget and focus. And then we can figure out, you know, what it is that we're going to do and what direction to go.
So should I, should I tell Penny to put it on the...
I usually put it on that it's canceled.
Okay. Very good. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Yes. I definitely ask you to, when we have that Monmouth Congress, we're definitely going to have to, um, on the warehouse, huge warehouse. Okay. We're definitely going to have a site planned on that one. Yeah. All right. I, I need a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
I make a motion.
I, I need a second?
A second.
On favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Minutes adjourned.